Silence or stand? The Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability is now in session.
Please do sit. Good morning, everyone. I extend a very warm welcome to everyone in very chilly Canberra to participate in this, the 24th public hearing of the Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability. During this five-day hearing in Canberra, we shall be examining the experiences of children and young people with disability in different educational settings. We start, as always, with an acknowledgement of country, and I invite Commissioner Mason to make the acknowledgement of country.
Thank you, Chair. We acknowledge the First Nations people on the land on which this Royal Commission is sitting. We pay respects to the Nunaw and Ngamri peoples. Their land is where the city of Canberra is now located. We also pay respects to the Wurundjeri people of the Kulin nation, where the city of Melbourne is now located. We pay deep respects to all elders, past, present and future, and especially elders, parents, young people and children with disability. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason. As many of you will know, we've just celebrated the 30th anniversary of the Marbo decision, a transformational event in Australia's history and not just our legal history. The celebration is tinged with sadness because of the passing last week of Sir Gerard Brennan, former Chief Justice of Australia, who delivered the leading judgment in Marbo. Sir Gerard was a man of profound learning, wisdom and humanity. He knew that the law can be a means of achieving social justice and was prepared to develop the law to that end in a principled and rigorous fashion. I was fortunate enough to meet with Sir Gerard on many occasions in his post-judicial life, his rich post-judicial life, and despite his towering achievements, I was always struck by his kindness, his generosity and humility. We have lost a great Australian. This is the first of our hearings to take place in Canberra, and it's the second hearing this year that is open to members of the public. As I mentioned, last month in Sydney at Public Hearing 23, the COVID-19 pandemic has had a significant and continuing impact upon our public hearings. The planning and preparation of a public hearing takes significant, really enormous, time, energy and resources and skill, and this is the case at the best of times. I want to acknowledge the exceptional work of the staff of the Royal Commission in organising and preparing for this public hearing while contending with the complications that are created by the COVID-19 pandemic and the seasonal flu risks. I also want to acknowledge, of course, that the COVID-19 pandemic has continued to have significant consequences for people with disability around Australia as well as for the broader Australian community. At this hearing, I am joined in the hearing room in Canberra by Commissioner Andrea Mason, OAM. Commissioner Rhonda Galberly, AC, is participating in the hearing from Melbourne. Senior counsel assisting the Royal Commission, Ms Kate Eastman, AMSC, is also in the Canberra hearing room, and she is joined by Ms Elizabeth Bennet, SC, and Ms Cathy Dalseth of council. Subject to any unforeseen developments, bearing in mind that COVID has not disappeared, the Royal Commission this week will receive evidence from 12 witnesses, most of whom will give evidence in person. Ms Eastman will provide more details in her opening statement. A number of parties have been given leave to appear at this hearing, and I will take their appearances through their legal representatives' appearances shortly. The Royal Commission has held two previous public hearings on the subject of inclusive education. Public Hearing Two, the first substantive hearing conducted by the Royal Commission, took place in Townsville, Queensland, in November 2019, over two and a half years ago. The choice of education as the subject matter of the hearing reflected the profound importance of education to the life experiences of people with disability. The main purpose of Public Hearing Two was to undertake a preliminary examination of the systemic challenges and the barriers that children and young people with disability face in accessing and obtaining a safe, inclusive and quality education. This examination, that is in Public Hearing Two, focused on the policies and practices of education authorities in Queensland. The commissioners who participated in Public Hearing Two published a commissioner's report, which is readily available on the website and elsewhere. The report identified a number of drivers of forms of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of students with disability in school settings. These drivers included gatekeeping and informal and formal exclusion of students from mainstream schools, restrictive practices applied to students exhibiting so-called behaviours of concern, the lack of adjustment, support and individualised planning for students with disability, the low expectations often held of students with disability, misuse of disciplinary measures including suspensions and exclusion from school, poor complaint handling procedures and insufficient training of the educational workforce to increase awareness of disability and an associated insufficient use of communication, educational techniques and suitable materials to support students with disability. The commissioner's report identified these as subjects for further investigation by the Royal Commission. Public Hearing Seven, which was conducted in Brisbane from the 12th to the 16th of December 2020, investigated a number of the matters identified in Public Hearing Two. The specific objective of Public Hearing Seven was to examine the barriers experienced by children and young people with disability in accessing safe, quality and inclusive education in mainstream schools. That hearing focused on the government school systems in New South Wales and Queensland. The commissioner's report for Public Hearing Seven, which has also been published, made findings about the experiences of Sam, a child whose first suspension was in his second term in kindergarten in a New South Wales public school. The commissioners found that the process followed in Sam's case was defective and that he should not have been subjected to repeated suspensions that ultimately prevented him from receiving a safe, quality and inclusive education. The commissioners also found that Sam's school had inappropriately identified restraint of Sam and of students as a reasonable adjustment. The commissioner's report, after analysing the evidence that had been given at the hearing, identified some additional topics for investigation by the Royal Commission. These included the ways in which the education system should protect the inherent dignity and value of students with disability, in particular by preventing them from being the subject of bullying, the policy and regulatory levers available to address the disproportionate use of exclusionary discipline against students with disability, and how restrictive practices should be regulated to ensure the safety of students with disability, including the question of whether such practices should be prohibited altogether. The Royal Commission's work on inclusive education has gone well beyond the public hearings on this subject. For example, in October 2019, we published an issues paper on education and learning. By the time we published an overview of the responses, and the overview, of course, is available, we had received 49 responses, many of which were extremely detailed. The responses related to experiences across all education systems. They also expressed a variety of opinions on the issues that we had identified. Not surprisingly, people within the disability community have a diversity of views on where the priorities for reform lie. The Royal Commission has also received a large number of submissions, and we have conducted many private sessions. As of today, the Royal Commission has received 4,677 submissions. Of these, 996, or 21%, discuss issues relating to education and learning for children and young people with disability. Certain themes recur in the submissions, such as the unwillingness or inability of some schools and educators to provide students with disability with reasonable adjustments to facilitate their studies. But as with the responses to the issues papers, submissions have bearing opinions on issues such as the ability of mainstream schools to provide inclusive or high-quality education to students with high support needs. Up to date, the Royal Commission has conducted over 1,000 private sessions. That is, a session at which a person meets with a commissioner and recounts their experiences or concerns on a confidential basis in that setting with the individual commissioner. Of the 871 private sessions which have been reviewed and coded, 271 relate to education and learning for children and young people with disability. About 160 of these private sessions were with parents or supporters of students or adults with disability. Many of the remaining private sessions were with people with disability themselves, who shared their experiences and ideas. Participants in private sessions addressed the matters for investigation identified in the commissioner's reports for Public Hearing Two and Public Hearing Seven. They too expressed a variety of opinions about the approaches that should be taken to the education of students with disability, particularly those with high support needs. It is clear from the responses to issues papers, from the submissions and from information conveyed in private sessions, that the disability community does not speak with one voice on all issues relating to the education of and learning by students with disability, especially students with high support needs. We are likely to hear something of this diversity during the course of the week. In this public hearing, by contrast with Public Hearings Two and Seven, students with disability and parents of children with disability will give evidence about students' experiences in a variety of educational settings, not only in mainstream schools. Following the completion of their evidence, a panel consisting of two advocates will give evidence. Evidence will also be given by senior officers from the Western Australian Department of Education and from the South Australian Department for Education. Each of these offices has provided a detailed statement explaining the educational programmes and settings available to students with disability in each of those states. And finally, we shall hear from the special advisor, Early Childhood Intervention and Autism, at the National Disability Insurance Agency. Senior counsel assisting the Royal Commission will provide a detailed overview of the evidence to be examined in the hearing, but I would like to touch upon the themes that are likely to arise. The first is choice. Australia is a country that allows students and their families a very wide array of educational options. We would like to understand what choice means for students and families of students who enter or are considering entering the special segregated education system. What factors prompt the choice? Is the decision made with the benefit of advice and support? In practice, what options are available? The second theme is the impact of different education settings on the life course of children with high support needs. We will receive evidence from students with disabilities and their families about the challenges of transitioning to life after school. This includes not only preparing for further education or employment, but also acquiring core skills such as effective communication and decision-making. The third theme is the intersection between the education system and the NDIS. The Royal Commission has already received evidence about the importance of reasonable adjustments for students with disability within systems like education that primarily remain the responsibility of the states and territories. We will hear evidence about the division of responsibilities between state and territory systems and the NDIS and the ways in which those tensions are managed in practice. I add one further comment. We quite often hear at the Royal Commission that the policy issues arising out of our terms of reference are to be regarded as involving a choice between mutually exclusive alternatives. We hear about it in the context of supported decision-making versus substituted decision-making, open employment versus segregated employment, group homes or similar arrangements versus independent living, and inclusive education versus segregated special education. The policy measures needed to achieve the objectives specified in our terms of reference do not necessarily require what can be described as binary thinking, that is, one thing or the other. The principal difficulty with binary approaches is that they tend to assume that there are relatively simple answers to very complicated questions. If there is one thing that clearly emerges from the enormous range of activities conducted by the Royal Commission over the past three years, it is that while some problems may be relatively easy to identify, finding solutions that will work and bring about real change is extraordinarily complex and challenging. We therefore need to consider whether there are more nuanced approaches that recognise the range of issues that must be confronted and the complex nature of the policy choices that we have to make. I shall now take appearances.
Thank you, Chair. I appear as counsel assisting the Royal Commission, and with me is Ms Elizabeth Bennet, SC, and Ms Cathy Dalseth. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms Eastman. Can I take appearances from anyone who is in the hearing room at present?
Ms Healy, Chair and Commissioners, I appear for three witnesses in this hearing, all of whom are parents of children with disability. That is, Ms Kimberley Langcake will be giving evidence today, Mr Ed Croft will be given evidence tomorrow, and Isabella Assudanum will be giving evidence on Wednesday.
Thank you, Ms Healy. Yes, is there anyone else in the hearing room? Yes.
May I please, my name is Annette. I appear with my London friend, Ms Munro, for the Commonwealth of Australia.
Thank you, Mr Annette.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Rebecca Bedford, and I appear on behalf of the State of Victoria.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You jumped the gun, Ms Bedford, but that is perfectly okay.
Apologies, Chair.
There's one other appearance here, right there.
May I please, the commission, my name is Howard. I appear with my local friend, Ms Buller, pursuant to the commission's leave at the end of May for the State of Western Australia.
Thank you very much, Mr Howard. We've taken Ms Bedford's appearance. Is there any other appearance by representatives appearing remotely? Perhaps New South Wales, yes?
Thank you, Chair. My name's Gail Finesse, and I appear with Trent Glover for the State of New South Wales.
Thank you, Ms Finesse. Is there an appearance for Queensland?
Yes, good morning. May I please, the commission, my name's Chloes Hesse, Katrina Chloes Hesse, appearing for the State of Queensland with Ms McMillan of Queens Council, instructed by Crown Law.
Yes, thank you, Ms Chloes Hesse. Is there any other appearance to be announced?
May I please, the commission, my name is Tom Simpson. I appear for the State of South Australia.
Yes, thank you, Mr Simpson. I think that may conclude the announcements of appearances. In that case, Ms Eastman.
Thank you, Commissioners. Well, counsel assisting also acknowledge and pay our respects to the traditional custodians on the lands on which we are meeting today and across Australia. We pay our respects to First Nations elders, past, present and emerging, as well as to all First Nations people here in the hearing room today and following the public hearing. I want to start with human rights. There is no doubt about the importance of education. Education prepares children and young people for life, work and citizenship. Education provides children and young people with the skills to make their own decisions and become independent. Education is a human right and a means by which people may understand their rights and also advocate for their rights. In 1948, the United Nations Universal Declaration of Human Rights declared, "Everyone has a right to education." And further, in Article 26.2, it states, "Education shall be directed to the full development of the human personality and to strengthening of respect for human rights and fundamental freedoms." Article 26.3 acknowledges, "Parents have a prior right to choose the kind of education that shall be given to their children." The right to education has been part of the core international human rights treaties, such as the 1966 International Covenant on Economic, Social and Cultural Rights and the 1989 Convention on the Rights of the Child. The Convention on the Rights of the Child recognises the importance of education, supporting, as it says, "the development of the child's personality, talents and mental and physical abilities to their fullest potential." Relevant to the Royal Commission's work is the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities, the CRPD, with particular reference to Articles 7 and Article 24. Commissioners, during the course of the hearing this week, the Royal Commission will publish on its website Professor Andrew Byrne's advice, explaining the scope of Article 24 of the CRPD. And with all of the research commissioned by the Royal Commission, the research informs the commission's work, but does not necessarily represent the views of commissioners. Here in the ACT, Section 27, Capital A, of the Human Rights Act recognises the right to education. That is based on the International Covenant on Economic, Social and Cultural Rights. And in 2019, Queensland introduced its Human Rights Act, and it expressly recognises the right to education. Commissioners, education and the early years are so closely linked to the development of beliefs, attitudes and behaviours towards people with disability. And in the submissions and responses that you've received to issues papers, you have heard that school is the place where all children learn about society, difference, social interaction and their peers. You've heard the lack of inclusion for children and young people with disability during their school years forms a key aspect of neglect, and it significantly contributes to exclusion and mistreatment throughout their lives. It highlights the importance of education generally, but specifically for the respect of the rights of people with disability and addressing issues such as attitudes. During this hearing, there will be an opportunity to examine whether and how the right to education informs the education policies and practices of the National Disability Insurance Scheme and the West Australian and South Australian governments. We want to now turn to the Royal Commission's work on education. Chair, you've outlined the Royal Commissioner's work with respect to Public Hearing Two and Public Hearing Seven. While this is the third public hearing examining specifically education in Australia, Commissioners, we have looked back at all past public hearings. You have heard from over 70 witnesses who have told you about their lives, sorry, about lived or direct experience in education across a wide range of education settings spanning over many years. The Royal Commission has received many submissions and responses to the issues paper and listened to people in private sessions and during community engagements. You have heard students with disability face significant barriers to a safe, quality and inclusive education. In your interim report, you said the Royal Commission will examine the social development and life course impact that the lack of recognition of the right to inclusive education in law has on people with disability. At this hearing, you will hear about the experiences of children and young people with disability across different school settings. This hearing will also be an opportunity to hear about the experiences of children and young people in special or segregated education settings. If I can put the importance of this in context, in Australia in 2021, there were around 340,000 children aged between four and five years old who were enrolled in a preschool programme. There are over 4 million students enrolled in 9,581 schools in Australia. The majority of students attend government schools, around 65%. This is followed by Catholic schools at 19.5% and independent schools, 15.4%. There are over 300,000 full-time equivalent teaching staff in Australian schools. In 2020, the Australian Institute of Health and Welfare reported that the proportion of children and young people with disability in Australia is as follows: 3.7% of children aged between 0 and 4 years old, 7.6% of children aged between 5 and 14 years old, and 9.3% of young people aged between 15 and 24 years old. That is a significant proportion of children and young people in Australia. We do not know precisely the proportion of students with disability attending mainstream schools or those who attend special or segregated units or classes. However, the Australian Institute of Health and Welfare reported that 21% of students with disability attend special classes. In trying to capture the data, we also had regard to data that as at June 2021, there were 122,763 NDIS participants who had school education as a goal in their participant plan. This included over 31,000 children aged between 1 and 4 years and 136,640 children aged between 5 and 12. Nationally consistent collection of data for school students with disability, the shorthand is NCCD, which was obtained by the Royal Commission under notice, recorded that in 2019, 5.2% of students with disability attended a segregated or special school, and of these, 84% of students presented with cognitive disability. Commissioners, you will recall Professor Julian Trolle's evidence at Public Hearing Four. He addressed the health of children and young people with cognitive disability, which is intellectual disability and autism spectrum disorder. He told you over 60% of people with autism have a disability involving profound or severe restrictions on core activities of daily living. Professor Trolle said that according to data from 2015, approximately 1 in 150 Australians, or 0.7% of the population, are estimated to be on what he described as the autism spectrum. He told you that over the past 70 years, the reported worldwide prevalence of autism has increased dramatically from 4 in 10,000 people to 1 in 100 people. The Australian statistics reflect this rise, with a 79% increase in the number of children diagnosed with autism since 2009. These statistics are relevant to the delivery of education in Australia and importantly to support children with disability to participate in inclusive education into the future. Professor Trolle also told you that people with intellectual disability commonly experience imp- commonly experience impairments in both expressive and receptive communication abilities. They may experience difficulty understanding abstract ideas and may require support to express and/or receive information. Up to 60% of people with intellectual disability are able to use some form of symbolic communication, for example, pictures, symbols, signs or speech. Professor Trolle said that people with very severe or profound disability, however, are primarily reliant on the support of people to interpret their vocalisations, facial expressions or body language. Up to 80% of people with severe intellectual disability do not develop effective speech. Professor Trolle said people on the autism spectrum display significant variability in functional language ability. He said people with severe autism and/or including co-intellectual disability may not develop effective speech. The ability to communicate is a core part of education and it will be examined over the course of this week. Professor Trolle's evidence highlights that when children are not supported and assisted with their communication in education settings, it will have long-term consequences across all areas of a person's life. Professor Trolle said this is particularly important for people with autism to have access to autism-related diagnostic and early intervention services. And he said it has been noted internationally for this to be limited to people who experience poverty or for people from vulnerable racial minorities. Commissioners, I'm now going to put up onto the screen a slide. This hearing will include evidence that may be distressing to some people. It will include accounts of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of children and young people with disability. If the discussions over the course of this week raise any concerns for anyone, please contact Blue Not Counselling and Referral Service, Lifeline, 131114, Beyond Blue, 1300-224-636. And for viewers who wish to seek support in relation to accounts of sexual violence, domestic and family violence, please contact 1-800 RESPECT, which is 1-800-737-732. For First Nations viewers, you can also contact local Aboriginal medical services for social, emotional support and wellbeing. So Commissioners, I'll now turn to the hearing and how we'll present the hearing over the next five days. The focus will be on hearing from people with lived and direct experience. It will be an opportunity to hear about the day-to-day experiences in a range of settings. People with disability have diverse and different experiences and we hope to capture a range of experiences hearing about the course of a person's education in primary school and in high school. We want to understand the sliding door moments. You may hear over the course of this week that metaphor sliding door being used often. We want to understand the sliding door moments, which might be the choice of school, the relationship with particular teachers or principals, when support and adjustments have worked, the implications and impact when planning and adjustments are not made. We will examine how the NDIS supports students in achieving their education goals, particularly in the transition from school to life after school, be it employment, future education or exploring the world. Today, you'll shortly hear from our first witness, Brittany Wilson. I'm very pleased she's here already in the hearing room and she uses the pronouns she/her. Brittany, who likes to be called Brit, is a board member of the Association for Children with Disability, TAS Inc. And Brit lives with muscular dystrophy and uses a wheelchair. Brit is the voice of youth on ACT with its Board of Management as a young female with neuromuscular disability. She has experienced barriers that are prevalent for people with disabilities, including with discrimination, accessibility and inequality. Brit is also a youth leader with ACT's Youth Empowering Peers Programme. She is, I'm pleased to say, an aspiring advocate and she believes that from the experiences that she has faced and witnessed firsthand that have overlooked children with disabilities. Brit finished school a few years ago and she will share her experiences in mainstream education. Brit has a younger brother and he has asked Brit to tell you about his story. You'll then hear from Kim Lancake and she is here with her son Mitch. Mitch also finished school recently and Kim will tell you about Mitch's experience from preschool, primary school, high school and beyond. She will tell you about the importance of supporting Mitch as a whole team, parents, teachers and community. Tomorrow, you'll hear from G Brown, who uses the pronouns they/him. G is a proud, trans, queer and disabled person who believes in being a keen disruptor of the system. G was a participant in the Children and Young People with Disability Australia's National Youth Disability Leadership Programme. He lives and breathes social advocacy and justice for everyone with a specific interest in disability, LGBTIQA+ youth and mental health through the lens of policy, education, awareness and his own lived experience. G is also a current board member for Encompass Community Services and involved with SIDA, that is, Children and Young People Disability Australia. Now, in March 2021, G was a keynote speaker at the Building Stronger Australian Families Policy Forum, run in partnership with Families Australia and SIDA. And in April 2021, G and Mary Sayers, who you'll also hear from this week, the CEO of SIDA, gave evidence before a joint standing committee on the National Disability Insurance Scheme Inquiry into Independent Assessments. G Brown will tell you about his experiences at school in a mainstream setting and particularly the final years of school and how they felt when the curriculum failed him. They will speak more broadly on education systems, including segregation. G's brother attends a special segregated school and G will talk about his experiences. G will tell you about how to advance the rights of children and young people, including involving young people in decision-making and hearing the voices of disabled youth and how policy addresses children and young people with disability. You will then hear from Ed Croft. Ed will share his son Ryan's experiences. Ryan has recently finished school and Ed will tell you about the barriers Ryan has experienced in his education, changing schools to find a learning environment that has responded and supported Ryan. He will speak about the impact on Ryan of his treatment at school, including restrictive practices. On Wednesday, we'll be very privileged to hear from Baz. He's 13 and he recently presented a speech to his school talking about cerebral palsy and why people with CP are just the same as everyone else. Now, I have to warn you Commissioners and people following the live feed that Baz has a YouTube channel and I am sure that he will ask all of us to follow and subscribe to his channel so we can follow his activities and his interests. You will also hear from Baz's mother Julie and Julie will talk to you about the importance of inclusive education and how schools need to plan and adapt to make the schools physically accessible and the educational settings inclusive for children and young people with disability. You'll then hear from Isabella about her experiences with respect to her son Emerson. Emerson is still at school and she will tell you about planning for Emerson commencing school, his attendance at a number of regular primary schools before attending a special school. And then finally, on Wednesday, we have a panel, Mary Sayers, the CEO of SIDA, and Catherine McAlpine, the CEO of Inclusion Australia. We warmly welcome them to return yet again to give evidence at the Royal Commission. And they will address the key themes that will arise in the evidence and the importance of children and young people being heard and involved in decisions about their education. They will speak to a vision of an inclusive education system in Australia and how to make that happen. Then on Thursday, we turn our attention to the governments. On Thursday, Mr Percival, the Director of Disability Inclusion for the Department of Education in Western Australia, will give evidence. Mr Percival is responsible for leading the implementation of system strategies to improve achievement and outcomes for students with disability in Western Australia. In his evidence, we will explore the extent to which that aspiration is operationalised at key points of a child's school life, again, the sliding door moments, at the point of enrolment, when the option about where to commence their education is made, during their schooling, when decisions about how best to provide adjustments to facilitate access to the curriculum, including by permitting external therapies or assistance in school environments, and how the Education Department works with the NDIS to ensure a smooth transition from school. At each stage, we will examine the way in which parents and students are involved in decision-making and what opportunities they have for raising and escalating concerns that they might have about the progress of their child's education. You will also hear from Dr Caroline Crossabarlow, the Executive Director of Support and Inclusion with the Department for Education in South Australia. She leads a division of nearly 650 staff with a budget of $125 million to support inclusion in government schools in South Australia. We will examine how South Australia approaches its task of supporting inclusion. Like Western Australia, we will examine the key inflection points in a child's journey through their school life, the interaction of different educational options and the way in which that system and practices respond to the needs of the child. On Friday, you'll also hear from Katie Coolis and Alexa from Yellow Ladybugs. Now Commissioners, you will recall the Yellow Ladybugs participated at Public Hearing 17 concerning the experience of women and girls in family and domestic violence. The Yellow Ladybugs is an autistic-led non-government organisation dedicated to the happiness, success and celebration of autistic girls, women and gender diverse autistic individuals. They have a strong advocacy mission to address the many challenges and barriers and disadvantages that autistic girls and young women face, including in education. Alexa will tell you about her daughter's experiences attending an independent school, mainstream schools and now special schools as a young woman with autism. The final witness will then be Peter D. Natress, I hope that's the right pronunciation, the Special Advisor, Early Childhood Intervention and Autism for the National Insurance Disability Agency. With respect to his evidence, we propose to examine three key issues. The first, what constitutes a reasonable and necessary support and therefore what attracts the funding under the NDIS? Secondly, we will ask how the NDIS and school education systems work together to plan and coordinate streamlined services for individuals requiring school education and disability services. And thirdly, we will also ask about NDIS support during the transition into school and then the transition from school into employment or life after school. Commissioners, we appreciate that language is important. For this hearing, we are taking our lead from our witnesses with respect to the language they use. This means that the expressions mainstream, regular, local, special and segregated may be used to describe a range of educational settings. May I also stress that this hearing is not intended to be a referendum on the merits of regular versus segregated educational settings or any judgement on the choices and decisions made. Our focus is to listen to understand, not to judge the experiences of people with disability and their family. They and the Royal Commission all share a commitment to improving the human rights, lives and opportunities of people with disability. Commissioners, for this hearing, we are not asking the Royal Commission to make any findings of negligence or breaches of the law. The Royal Commission is not intended to be a substitute for local complaint processes or internal investigations. The Royal Commission is not a court and it cannot provide remedies for individuals. For this hearing, we will not be asking the Royal Commission to make findings whether a particular person or government breached a law or breached a policy. As with every hearing, I want to conclude by reminding those in the hearing room or following the Royal Commission that there are provisions in the Royal Commission's Act which have the very clear object of protecting witnesses who give evidence before the Royal Commission. In particular, I want to draw attention to Section 6, M of the Act, which provides that any person who uses, causes or inflicts any violence, punishment, damage, loss or disadvantage to any person on account of the person having appeared as a witness, giving evidence or producing documents to the Royal Commission, that person commits an indictable offence. Can I further draw attention to Section 6, N of the Act, which makes it an offence for any employer who dismisses any employee from his or her employment or prejudices any employee in his or her employment on account of the employee having appeared as a witness before the Royal Commission or given evidence before the Royal Commission or produced a document or thing or given information or a statement pursuant to a summons or requirement or notice. So can I return finally to remind people that the public hearing will continue to be made available on the web stream and we encourage people watching this hearing that if they feel that the topics cause them distress or concern or they are upset, then please contact the numbers and the services that we identified in the slide. We perhaps can put that up again. And for those here at the hearing, the Royal Commission has an internal counselling and support services team, which is made up of social workers and counsellors who are available to provide counselling and support to people engaged with the Royal Commission and information is available on the Royal Commission's website. So Commissioners, thank you and we now open the hearing. Now mindful of the time and maybe if we could have an adjournment for, we've got time, for half an hour and then we'll commence with Brittany Wilson's evidence.
All right, it is now 10.50 more or less, so we will resume at 11.20.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll take the adjournment.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now resumed.
Yes, Mrs.
Thank you. Well, our first witness for this hearing is Brittany Wilson. And I think we've agreed that we'll just go with Britt today. And Britt's going to give an affirmation.
Britt, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence today. We very much appreciate you doing that and telling us about your experiences and your views. If you would please follow my associate who's hiding behind the column over there. She will administer the affirmation to you. Just listen to what she says and follow her instructions, if you don't mind.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much, Britt. Just to explain, I'm sure you know, but just to make sure. You can see on the screen Commissioner Mason, who is joining, Commissioner Calberley, I'm sorry, who is joining the hearing from Melbourne. Commissioner Mason is with me in the hearing room, of course, and Ms Eastman, you can see in front of you. I'll now ask Ms Eastman to ask you some questions. Thank you.
So thank you, Britt, for joining today. I just need to do some formalities and to confirm that your name is Brittany Wilson.
Yep.
And the Royal Commission knows your address?
Yes.
And in terms of, often we ask people describing what they do. And I think we've agreed that we'd like to describe you as an aspiring advocate. Is that okay?
Yes.
And you haven't prepared a statement for the Royal Commission, but you've got some talking points. And Commissioners, we've had a discussion about the topics that Britt would like to talk to you about today. And when we do that, we're not going to refer to the names of any person, be they a teacher's aide, a teacher, a location of a school, the name of the school, principal, and we'll do our best on that one. And then secondly, you want to share with the Royal Commission your experiences. But also, you have your brother's permission and wish that you speak on his behalf as well. And he's happy to be identified as James. Is that right?
That's right.
So I want to start by inviting you to tell the Royal Commission about yourself. You might have heard me mention this morning in the opening about the advocacy work that you're doing and the organisations that you're involved in. But can we start just to share with the Commissioners and people following the hearing? Tell us about yourself.
So I'm Britt. I go by Britt. I'm twenty-one. And as mentioned, I have a love for advocacy. After years of advocating for myself and my brother, I realised it's something I could do professionally. And I've developed a real love for it. So I've been working with ACD for a couple of years now, which has led me to a position on their board. And currently, I'm an employed mentor to young people with disabilities. Under them, it's an employment connector. We're doing a research project with BiAT to help young people better their skills for employment. I'm also working with Cider on a research team paired with the University of New South Wales and Inclusion Australia. And we're working on a research project around growing up and making decisions for people with cognitive disabilities. So my role in that was to facilitate interviews with participants from all around Australia. I got to hang out and chat with a lot of young people and their families, which was really nice. It showed me a lot of what I had learnt from my mum and what I'd gone through as a disabled young person myself. And then my role was to make sure all of that data that we got from the lovely participants was heard and understood correctly in our final report, which is still being written. So there's some preliminary evidence there. Preliminary, I'm sorry, I can't say that word properly. Preliminary findings there that are really, really valuable.
I might ask you about some of those findings, if you're allowed to talk about that towards the end. Because I think you've got some recommendations and suggestions. So can I ask you to tell us about James? He's given you some things he'd like to share, so that you describe him and his life. What would you like to tell us about James?
James is my little brother. He's seventeen. I will always call him my baby brother, but he's a young man. He is an Edward gamer and absolutely loves anything to do with electronics. He's currently studying business in year eleven and wants to make his own business eventually. And the dream is to open a cafe for disabled, for disabled people to be employed within the cafe and run it completely inclusive to all people, which is a really, really nice dream, I think.
So you know this hearing is about the experiences of children and young people at school and some of those decisions that are made about children and young people, about where they go to school and what happens when they're at school. And you wanted to talk to the Royal Commission about your experiences at school and also James's experience at school. And some of this touches upon what we might call mainstream schools and also segregated schools. And that's been for James, he's had time in a segregated or special school. Is that right?
No.
Okay.
James, we've both been in mainstream school. James has, we've had learning centres, which are segregated parts within mainstream education.
So both of you have had some very challenging experiences at school. So Britt, can we start with you? And I know you might want to tell the Royal Commission some stories which are difficult and just as a bit of a reminder to people following that some of the things you're going to talk about are quite hard things to talk about and to listen to. So we'll just go slowly. You let me know if you need to have a break or you just want to have a pause as well. So we've got to go right into it. Some of the experiences that you have had at school, you've been bullied, you've been excluded, you've been left behind by teachers' aides. And you felt sometimes personally, you're very left out by the adults around you, not so much by the kids. So there's some of the experiences that you particularly wanted to share with the Royal Commission. And I know you've got some notes there. So over to you.
So basically, our story kind of starts in primary school. I will go into a bit about, because my brother's only four years behind me. We did share a lot of our experiences. And then after I went to high school, they kind of became separate. So it kind of started from day dot. My mum struggled to find a accessible school that had flat services for me and my brother. And it was an out-of-area school, so she had to fight for that. Then, as the years went on, it became really apparent that I H N S and all the rules and everything kind of could be abused to help or overused in the, under the impression of our safety, which wasn't always right, in my opinion. When I was younger, I was made use my manual chair for long excursions and things like that, which I did tire easily. But I was put in my manual chair sometimes when I didn't want to be because it was easier. In grades four, grade five, I actually became permanently wheelchair-bound due to scoliosis. When this happened, my friends kind of rallied around me, which was really sweet. They would want to take interns. Who got to push me in the playground and to help keep me included. Though, we, a lot, majority of the TAs there would allow this because they saw how happy it kind of made me and they would supervise.
Jumping into TAs is teachers' aides.
Yes, sorry. Some would turn up late for shift though, which meant that I wasn't able to eat my lunch. I would miss out on all the playtime. Some would flat out refuse to allow my friends to push me, to keep me included. Say that it was their job, there was a safety rule. And but on the same hand, in the middle of a game, they either just didn't want to help me or then see another TA and spend the next, whatever left of the break talking to that TA while I sat there in my chair with them and refused to kind of go. And if I interrupted their conversation, I was told that I was rude and disrespectful.
Were they talking about you or talking to you?
No, they would be talking about either one of the other students, what they did on the weekend, upcoming meetings.
Did you sort of feel invisible, that you were there and they're talking around you?
I wasn't included in the conversation whatsoever.
And how did, what, how did that make you feel and what impact did that have on you?
It was very damaging, especially when I tried to interrupt and say, can I please go play? And was told that I was interrupting and very rude. And then I had to wait. It made me feel very insignificant. Especially when my friends would come up and be really upset that I wasn't playing with them. And they would even ask, can we just take off? So we don't have to interrupt your conversation? And I'd be like, no, it's against the rules. So I would have to tell my friends, please go play without me. Don't miss out on your recess too. And that was really hard as a nine-year-old. I shouldn't have had to have that responsibility to kind of think of my friends above myself.
Were you able to tell anyone how you're feeling at that time so that it could change? And you would be able to play with your friends at lunchtime and breaks?
I would tell some of the other TAs that I was close with and they would apologise on other TA's behalf and allow me to do whatever I wanted with my friends because I didn't agree. But there was really no one that fixed the behaviour and no one that I really spoke to. And if I did, the next day I'd get, well, why did you drop on me? It was one conversation, which I never wanted to deal with. I'm not a confrontational person. Oh, I wasn't as a kid. So I found those situations really hard to deal with. And I felt like I couldn't speak for myself without basically being labelled as rude. And that was very damaging to me because I never wanted to be rude in any sense of the way because I was raised to be very respectful.
Okay, what, and you've got some more points there that you want to talk about. What would you like to talk about next?
We were made go to the toilet at certain times. If we didn't go to the toilet at these particular times, we were told that, we weren't told, it was made very apparent in the behaviour and the body language that we'd majorly inconvenienced the staff. Then we'd, they'd have adult conversations in the bathroom about their weekends while we're sitting in the sling over the toilet. And if we interrupted these conversations, it was made very apparent that it wasn't appreciated. My brother, my mum and I were very, my mum sheltered us very much from a lot of things. And alcohol wasn't talked about in our house at all. And one afternoon, my brother was in the bathroom with two TA staff. And they were talking about their weekend, how drunk they got. And my little brother turned around and said, what's alcohol? And they're like, oh, well, your mum would drink alcohol. And my brother's like, oh, everybody drinks alcohol. My brother's like, oh, coffee. My mum drinks a lot of coffee. It makes her go a bit silly and she gets very hypo. And they're like, no, coffee's not alcohol silly. Alcohol is different. And tried to explain what alcohol was to my little brother, who was about seven. And my brother come home and asked my mum, do you drink alcohol, mum? And mum's like, no. Where would this conversation come from? And she was very pleased about that and we didn't find it very appropriate for them to be having that kind of discussion while they're taking my little brother to the bathroom. They would also constantly, a lot of the TAs would constantly butt into conversations when I was talking with my peers, which would make my peers very uncomfortable, considering. Try being a little kid trying to go out and play and get up to mischief with a TA constantly hovering over you, telling you, oh, this is against the rules. This is against the rules. You shouldn't be acting this way. You should be. Like basically, I wasn't allowed to be a kid because I was constantly monitored. And rather than helping me be included, the TAs became kind of a segregation in themselves because no one wanted to be around a teacher twenty-four seven. And it became very, very isolating. I was just very grateful that I had a few friends that found ways of dealing with it. So we'd, if the teacher decided, if the TA was late, they would quickly pack up my lunch and we'd go hide down at the bottom of the oval, away from the TAs for the whole break. And because they didn't want to get in trouble themselves, they didn't tell on anyone because like they'd have to admit they lost me. So that became, became our way of dealing it. We would hide in bushes. They'd hide my wheelchair and everything. It was great.
What about some of the schoolwork? So you had some experiences with the TAs, in effect, taking over your schoolwork.
Yes.
And telling you what was right or wrong. And you had one of your friends intervened in that. Do you want to tell the Royal Commissioners about the schoolwork?
So I struggled with math a lot. I've never been a good mathematician. It's not my strong suit. One day I was working and I followed the formula the teacher gave us. And I followed it to the key and I knew that I had got this math equation right, for once. I knew I had it right. My TA rubbed it out and said that I was doing the equation wrong. And then I had to do it this way and this is the way she did it at school. And I said, well, look, I followed what, the way the teacher said, the way the teacher has done it makes better sense to me. I am pretty sure I have it right. I'm sorry. I don't want to go with your answer. I want to go with my own. And she's like, well, I'm telling you, you've got it wrong. I'm like, oh, I'm sorry, but if I've got it wrong, I'd like the teacher to tell me I've got it wrong. And she kept insisting that I use the equation that she laid out. So I turned to a fellow PR that I'd known since I was little and I just kind of tapped him on the shoulder and I said, look, you're good with maths. You're top of our class. Have I done this correctly? And he's like, well, you've done it the same way I did and you've got the same answer I did. So yeah, Britt, you're right. The TA still insisted that we were both wrong. Um, so I called the teacher over. Um, and the teacher patted both my peer and I on the back and said, good job kids, you did good, you've done it right. And all I did was kind of look back over at the TA to kind of say, okay, I did it. Because I was really proud of myself. And she goes, oh, you don't have to be like that, I was only trying to help. I'm like, oh, it's not how I meant that look. Um, and it kind of made me feel like really bad and I kind of avoided her the rest of the day because. She was meant to help support me, not belittle my experiences in learning. Um, my brother had a lot of those incidents as well. Um, where he was completely, he, all of his work, he, he struggled with spelling. Um, and handwriting. Um, and we found after my mum had gone in there for a week to help support him and watch what the TAs were doing with him. Um, they were completely erasing whole sentences that he didn't write correctly. Um, and rewriting them for him. So the teachers weren't even marking his work. So the teacher, teachers were going off of the TAs. Um, experiences and telling us that my brother was three years behind. In his learning, which we knew was incorrect because we were working with him at home and he was. Flourishing, the only thing he struggled with was writing and spelling. Um, and my mum figured out why. Um. So, yeah, there were a lot of incidences like that and they built up. A lot of frustration because we weren't allowed, every time we spoke out, we were told that we were being rude. That we're being disrespectful, that we weren't appreciative of the help that they were giving us and we didn't need to act that way. Um, when really it was just frustration and the wrong tone. Um, because the frustr- frustration was evident in our voices. We actually got sent to the principal's office. Um, we had a meeting with the head of the disability department in our school. Both of the TAs that we're having issues with. Um, both of our teachers each, um, and the principal. My mum was not notified of this meeting at all. My brother and I had no support. Um, besides those in the room that were accusing us. Um, I was told by my favourite teacher that I thought was really supportive of me. Um, and my principal that I thought understood me. That we, that they, they were very disappointed in my behaviour. Um, that they never thought that they could see me ac- hear about me acting this way. That they didn't appreciate the way I was treating the staff. Um, that I was being very rude, very disrespectful. And that there are better ways to communicate if I'm having any issues. Um, because I'm a very, I ve- I tried to be very, um. Respectful as I was raised, I started bawling, I just cried. I couldn't even defend myself. Um, my brother, he's more quick to temper, he got very angry. Um, and was saying, well, this is what you're doing to us though, why can't we talk about it? Um, and we didn't even get an apology. All we got was that we should try to do better and that they know we can do better. Um, and that, um. There's, that the, there must be a miscommunication going on. None of the issues were resolved and my mum wasn't even still notified until we got home and told her the meeting happened. Because we were so distraught that our teachers were seeing us this way. Because we were being painted in that light by our TAs.
James has had some other, um, issues at school where he's experienced some physical abuse.
Yes.
Do you wanna talk about that? How are you feeling about talking about this?
Yeah, okay. Um, so after I left for high school, um, I was sort of my brother's protector. A lot in school, so if I knew something was going on, um, because I had more diplomatic way of dealing with things. He'd come to me and I'd go to the person that we needed to talk to. Um, after I left for high school, James no longer had that person. Um, and because James's more approach is quick to temper. He, all of his issues and concerns were labelled as, um, bad behaviour. Um, so because he didn't know how to deal with things and express his emotions in the correct way. Um, he was labelled as a bad child. Um, that he had behavioural issues. Um, and they would, because his behavioural issues were so bad, he, they'd, um. Tell him what speeds he's allowed to use on his electric wheelchair, um, they'd control that kind of thing. But there were a lot of issues late into him being in grade six and grade five. He come home with, our car found str- stretch marks all up his bottom. All the way from his back, um, from where they had pulled up his pants after taking him to the toilet. Um, with their fingernails. Um, he, uh, had more issues about. Um, them not taking off his harness, so he was unable to reach the desk to do his schoolwork. He got detention on his birthday because he didn't complete his schoolwork. Because they didn't allow him to take off his harness. So his friends took off his harness for him. They lifted the, um, table to try and get him under the wheelchair, under the table to do his work. And were trying to give him all of his pencils. So they were trying to do this in a whole class time. So none, none of them got their work done and the teacher gave them detention. Even though they didn't see the struggle and James had known TA staff that day. Um, there was also another incident that resulted in my mum. Um, well, the two other incidences that resulted in my mum pulling my brother out of school for six months. Um, one was, um, my brother had just had a circumcision for medical reasons. Um, and he was allowed to go back to school after a couple of days. He, the, James would use urinal bottle and, um, they didn't place the urinal bottle correctly. When taking him to the bathroom. And to stop him from urinating on them and making a mess of the bathroom. They grabbed him by the tip of his private area and squeezed. To stop him urinating. Um, which obviously caused him immense pain. Um, and after this, they gave him a bunch of dojos. School dojos and a big reward for the way he communicated and dealt with the situation. So, um, James come home, they didn't call my mum, they didn't make an incident report. About what happened. Um, James come home, mum, I got some really cool dojos and a reward today. Because, keep in mind, he's only nine, ten, sorry, ten and, ten, eleven. Um. Uh, and was really excited that he got rewards. And mum's like, well, why did you get those? Uh, because I was awesome at communicating with what happened in the toilet. And mum's like, oh, okay, didn't really think much of it because of all the other issues going on, she thought. They dropped in, uh, like the, the sling wasn't right again or they've made a mess again. Um, the next day, the principal come up to mum and said, we're really sorry for what happened in the bathroom with James. But we're really impressed with the way that he handled the situation, we're very proud of him, good job. To him. And mum's like, okay. Um, well, I'm glad that the situation was resolved, I don't know what you're talking about though. And they're like, oh, just an incident happened in the bathroom, I'm sure James will tell you when you get home. So they didn't even inform my mum when they had this conversation. Um, my brother went to the bathroom when we were home and it really hurt him. Um, and mum's like, well, why is it hurting you mate, it shouldn't be hurting you. And James goes, oh, because of what happened in the bathroom, mum. And mum's like, right, okay, what happened? You need to tell me now. Um, and James informed them, informed mum. Mum was livid, to say the least. Um, she wanted, uh, action to be taken. And the education department, and the principal said that it was an accident that it's been taken care of. Mum requested that the TA no longer work with my brother, she was still working with him. Um, because I had no other staff that could be rostered onto James. Um, because mum didn't even want her in, uh, the ba-. Mum didn't even want her in the vicinity of the bathroom with James ever again. But because they were lacking in staff, that was not an option apparently. Um, mum tried to go to the police to get a restraining order. Put on a staff member, um, because she was that desperate. The police told her that it wasn't their issue, that it was the education department issue. And that she had to take it up with the education department, the edu- okay, education department never got back to her. Um, and basically said that they need to go through the criminal courts and things like that. Which, so everyone gave mum the runaround. Um, then there was also an incident, um, where my brother. My brother was becoming tired of everything that was going on. Um, and there was an incident that led to mum pulling him out of school after this. Um, where he, James no longer wanted to go to the bathroom at school. So he would hold, which caused him urinary problems and bladder prob- and bowel problems. Um, and he had an accident. And so they went to the bathroom to clean him up and take him to the toilet. The TA pulled his pants down, took one look at him, pulled them back up. Said, I'm not dealing with that, I wanna go watch the assembly. And James was left in his own feesties until he got home. Um, which could have caused him severe infection after the circumcision. Um, not to mention the embarrassment of the smell. Um, and everything that it could have caused. Um, but James lied. James told us that it was the other TA, TA that had been harassing him. And not the TA that had done it, because he wanted to use it as an avenue to finally fire. The TA that had been the one causing all the problems. And because of this lie, all of his credibility apparently was now shot. And we couldn't fight anything that had happened to him during his time at primary school. So my mum pulled him out of school and he remained out of school for six months. Until we were able to put one of our own carers that was at home into the school as his TA. And it was to solely work with James. Um, and that was the only condition that mum would allow James back to school.
Just pa- pause in there, Britt, and I'm conscious of the time and all the topics that you'd like to talk about. Uh. School has still been difficult for James, hasn't it? And he's had his moments in terms of wanting to be at school. And there was one very serious matter that you wanna speak about, so give everybody a warning.
Yes.
Uh, that, that what you're gonna talk about may be extremely confronting. So do you wanna just tell, I think James wanted you to share.
Yep.
His experience of getting to this point where he just felt that was it.
Yeah, so James and I, uh, experienced some time in out of home care. Um, due to child protection services. Um, this was not a great time in our life, along with everything else we'd, we'd dealt with in the education department. Um, James didn't have the support staff that he had in primary school, in high school. Um, and he didn't have a lot of it. So one lunchtime with everything that had been going on. Um, he managed to sneak out of school grounds. Um.
In his wheelchair?
In his electric wheelchair, that's two hundred kilos. Um, managed to be lost for an hour before they knew he was gone. And he'd made it to. And he was going to attempt suicide. Um, he was fourteen when this happened. And I only heard about it because a friend noticed him on the bridge as she was driving past. Um, so, uh, because I wasn't living with him at the time. Um, thankfully, our father was able to talk him down. Because once he realised that there was railings on the bridge, he was heading for the wharf. Um, but tell me how a high school. Loses a disabled child in a two hundred kilo wheelchair. And lets him walk out the gates. Like, that, that shouldn't have happened. And for not, to not notice him gone for over an hour. Right? I know he's a smart kid, but he, that shouldn't have been able to, uh, come to pass.
So Britt, um, just looking at the time that we've got. And I know there's a story that you want to share about towards the end of your time at high school.
Uh, yeah, so year eleven.
About that one, or do, or do you prefer to sort of move on to talk about some of the work that you're doing with cider and recommendations? What would you like to do?
Um, um, I suppose I can quickly brush over that.
Don't, I don't want, I don't want you to rush, I just might need to be comfortable in the stories that you want to tell. Because I think this, this coming to the end of school.
Yeah.
And that sense of how an attitude of one person really. Caused you to feel excluded and different, but also became this sort of, um. Like spark for you to say, right, I am going to speak up from now on. So do you wanna tell the Royal Commissions about that and then we might talk about the work that you're doing with cider?
Okay.
So just say to the commissions, we're just probably going a little bit over the time that we had allocated. But I'm very keen for Britt to tell you about this.
So, um, in year eleven, uh, which is college for me, so I'll refer to it as it is college, because that is different. Um, I, I had a big passion for photography and I chose to use it as one of my sub- subjects. Um, right from the get-go, I just did not click with this teacher. Um, and in college, uh, I actually refused to have any TA staff. Because of my experience in primary school. I did in high school as well. Um, but I had minimal TA staff to help me with bathrooms because it was an OHNL. OHNS risk apparently, um, to let me go to the toilet by myself, even though I was perfectly capable. Um, so, um, in college, we were told that if we wanted TA staff, we had to go into. The segregate, segregated learning centre, um, which I flat out refused to do because. Um, which I flat out refused to do because it didn't allow me to. Uh, pursue my mainstream classes that I wanted to pursue. Um, so I risked having no support. Um, which I was fine with, cause I had friends in majority of my classes that were happy to help. Um, except for photography. Um, so, uh, this teacher and I didn't get along. From the get-go, he referred to me as Belinda rather than Brittany. Um, uh, and it was always, um, because I told him that I need to be able to access the classroom. And it was really important that, like, people kinda pushed their chairs in for me to be able to get through. Um, and things were at an appropriate height for me to reach. As long as that was happening, I didn't need a T A. Um, and right from the get-go, he, um. Oh, everybody push your chairs in, Belinda needs to get passed. Um, oh, we make sure to help Belinda if she needs it. Um, uh, and things like that.
So one of my friends had to step in.
Uh, after a couple of days, uh, it was about a week of school. And me reminding him, my name is Brittany, not Belinda. One of my peers from high school stood up in the classroom as he was doing roll call. And said, her name is Brittany, how about you get it right? Like, it's been long enough now. I, and he's like, mumbled an apology. But for a student to have to step up to the teacher. Um, yeah, like, it made me feel pride because I had that backing, but it still shouldn't have happened. Um, then there was an incident in the darkroom. Um, I was struggling because the machine wasn't working, the enlarger. Um, I knew how to do it, but I just couldn't get it to work. So I called the teacher over. He's like, oh, you haven't got it set up right. And I'm like, well, yes, I do. I've got it set up how I need it for now, so I can reach it. But it's not working. He's like, oh, well, because you haven't got it right. I'm like, I do. It's not turning on. How do I turn it on? And he's like, oh, it's not right. Here, I'll get this student over. They can help you. And the student came over and they're like, and he's like, help Britt. Um, and she's like, what do you want me to do, Britt? I'm like, I don't need your help. I've got it set up. The actual thing's not turning on. Um, I don't wanna keep you from your work. Like, just go, I'll figure it out. And she's like, are you sure? I'm like, yes, I'm fine. He's just not listening to me. Um, and we kinda chuckled about the teacher's attitude and she went and did her work. Um, teacher come back because I still hadn't done anything, cause the enlarger wasn't working. And he's like, oh, well, why is this not on? I'm like, because it's not working. He's like, oh, why didn't you tell me that? I'm like, I, I did three times, actually. He's like, oh, maybe you need to speak up. I'm like, okay, whatever. And because of these constant, um, little things. I started to slack off in the class. I was deliberately being lazy just to see what would happen. Um, and, cause I had no drive, I, he'd taken all of. My happiness out of photography, um, with his attitude and the way he was constantly. Putting me on spotlight in the classroom. For someone with severe social anxiety that had had six months off school the year prior to extreme bullying. Um, that was really, really hard for me and was giving me constant panic attacks. Um, in the school environment again. And my friends were constantly having to deal with me at recess and lunch, trying to calm down after that class. Um, so, uh, because I slacked off, he wrote in my book. Um, and it's years ago, but it still stays with me. I'm sure all work was completed to the best of your ability. Um, perhaps we should look at getting you a T A. He wrote that under my artwork. And, um, I was livid. I stormed out of his classroom, um, and I refused to go back. Um, and I took my book home and my mum's ex hu- like, my mum's ex-husband at the time. Uh, husband at the time, come in and checked on me. And I showed him, I'm like, what do you get from that? And he goes, well, sounds like a pompous prick wrote it. I'm like, yeah, that was my teacher. Um, I begged him not to tell my mum, cause I knew my mum would react. Mum come in, uh, looked at, he told my mum, she come in, looked at it, ripped it out of my book. And said, that's not going anywhere near my daughter's artwork. Um, I'll be coming into school with you tomorrow. I'm like, okay. Mama's pet, mother bear's awakened. Um, she marched into the school with me, went straight for the principal's office and sent me to class. Um, they told her that the teacher wasn't on premises. Um, but they're really sorry for the way he's treated me and that I'm allowed to transfer. To my friend's class that would still allow me to do my photography. Um, and mum texted me, he's not here today. I'm like, mum, it's Wednesday. I have class with him today. He's here. I just passed him in the hallway. And she's like, oh, I'll be back. Um, but yeah, so the assistance principal came to me after that and said that I'm able to transfer. And that I didn't need to go and do the green slip thing that would mean talking to the teacher and confronting why I wanted to transfer. Um, which was fine, and I was really happy about that, cause I don't do well with confrontation. Um, and I knew it would be an argument. Um, so in the next class, I went to the new class that I was going to and I had my best friend with me. It was her class. Um, he came and found me, the teacher. Um, he went through the back door so the other teacher wouldn't see him. And he asked me to come into a room alone with him to discuss the issues. I said, I'm sorry, I don't feel comfortable with that. He's like, well, um, this is not the way to do things. You are still assigned to my class. And I would like you to tell me why you are leaving it. I'm like, I'm sorry, but I've been given permission from the assistance principal that I do not need to discuss this with you. And I will be staying in this classroom. And he's like, well, that's not how we do things. You need to come with me. And my friend stood up, very powerful, she, uh, closed fists. And she said, I'm sorry, but my friend's not going anywhere with you. Um, and he turned to her and said, well, you are a student, I am a teacher. You will listen and she is coming with me. And my friend said, no, she's not, mate. I don't care who you are. And I could see that she was getting riled and I didn't want her to get into trouble. So I said, look, fine, you wanna hear it? I will tell you why I'm not coming back to your classroom, but I will do it here with my friend and not in a room alone with you. Because I do not feel safe. Um, and he sat down and he's like, okay, fair. Um, why aren't you coming back to class? And I said, well, quite frankly, teachers like you are the reason I'm bullied. Teachers like you who single me out and make every little thing about my disability. And highlight it to the whole classroom, oh, why people like me get bullied. Um, I had six months off school last year because. I have social anxiety due to bullying. You triggered all of that with your actions. You constantly put me in spotlight. And quite frankly, I was lazy in your class and you blamed it on my disability. Um, you made everything about it. And the comment you wrote in my book just sent me over the edge. It was extremely derogatory. Because I comment in your book, I don't remember writing a comment in your book. I'm like, he said that my lazy artwork was to the best of my ability and that you wanted me to get a T A. He's like, oh, I didn't mean it like that. I sure, I was sure that you were working as hard as you could and I meant it as a compliment. I'm like, how is, how is that a compliment? Um.
Can I jump, can I jump in there? The other teacher, whose class you were in.
Yeah.
Was, wasn't aware of that conversation.
No.
I've heard it, didn't she?
She didn't overhear it. She saw him leaving.
Hmm.
Um, cause she was in the other classroom doing, it was a segregated classroom, so there was a wall. And you had the art area where you were painting and then you had the inner classroom. She was in the inner classroom. Um, and we were in the art area where there was a back door and he'd purposely gone through the back door. Um, and yeah, so, uh, he tried to defend himself. I said, look, I've got severe social anxiety. There is no further things I wanna discuss with you. I'm not returning to your classroom. We cannot fix this issue. Um, and quite frankly, I'd like you to leave. Um, and he kinda mumbled and didn't get an apology, but he left. Um, I was shaking by the end of this, uh, cause that's the first time I stood up to a teacher. Um, once he left, the other teacher came to check on us and realised he was leaving. And said, he didn't come in here, did he? And we're like, yeah, he did. She's like, he wasn't supposed to. He wasn't supposed to come near you. Um, until he had an apology. I'm like, well, I didn't get an apology. Um, and so we went to the assistance principal's office, told him what had happened. He apologised immensely. Not long after that, I don't think he worked at the school. Um, but a couple of days later, cause I was still in role in his class technically. I had to check in with him for homeroom to be, um, for attendance. And he mentioned to me, um, oh, you mentioned you have social anxiety. And I said, yes, I do. I'm being diagnosed with it. He goes, oh, well, I feel so anxious sometimes too. Um, if you can't, if you choose to come back to class, I'm sure we can work on our anxiousness together. I'm like, so you didn't hear a word I said? Okay, no, I won't be returning to your class and I don't wanna see you again. Goodbye. And went off. Um, thankfully, I didn't have any other issues like that after him. But that was a huge one to deal with.
Britt, thank you. I know there's a lot of other experiences that you've had. But do you wanna talk to the Royal Commissioners about what you're doing with cider? And this really important work on assisting children and young people with decision-making.
So at the moment, um, as I said, I'm going through, I was an interviewer for participants. Um, and we're talking about, uh, the capacity to make decisions. And how to make that more accessible to young people with cognitive disabilities. Um, and a lot of, it actually, we, we saw. That it did actually have a, um, connection to the education department. So, ah, education, as it's been said today, um, isn't right. But, um, everyone deserves to have an education, but we aren't making that education accessible. Um, the curriculum is. So rigid and so structured, but it doesn't fit everyone. And how are we meant to make, making decisions more accessible with something that can't be bent? Um, so many families, from what we've heard. They have to put in so many building blocks to get their children to the stage of making decisions. Um, that can affect them for the rest of their lives. And some children can't get to that point and those families have to make them themselves. There is not enough support in anything for families. But it makes you think about the children growing up in C P, child protection. That don't have those fundamental building blocks that so many parents can give. Um, sometimes school is the only constant. But if school's not providing those accessible. Um, fundamentals, who is? Um, and we talk about segregated learning and we talk about mainstream. Why does there have to be two, is what I wanna know? Why can't we bring what we have in the support network and the inclusivity? Into mainstream? Why can't we, why does there have to be a learning centre that's, that we bring disabled people? Into and pull them away from their peers? Because that's not teaching the children anything, that's not helping the children. That's showing all of the other, to all the other peers that they've gotta go away and do that. Like, they've gotta be taken away because they're different. I've never believed in that. Um, why can't we make a curriculum? More accessible and more adaptive? Because we know it doesn't work even for able-bodied children. So many able-bodied children can't face the curriculum either. I've had so many friends drop out of school because they just can't do it anymore. So why are we stuck to this structure that doesn't work? Like, and we've had it for years, but we've always said change is meant to happen. Um, and with what we've found in some, um, our preliminary findings. Um, it, there needs to be more support. Um, for families, for educators, um. Educators need more funding, they need more training, they need more lived experience with how to. Like, handle a disabled person coming into their classroom. Because we don't wanna be guinea pigs anymore, which is what we feel like. Um, we're constantly a training tool. Every new disabled child is a new learning curve, I get that, but don't make us feel like it. Um, don't make the children have to be the ones to stand up for their peers. Um, don't, I don't know. So, it comes in that basis of we're getting more support in segregated learning. But we're, but we're not giving the children opportunities to pursue their mainstream education goals. And honestly, segregation, segregated learning isn't a choice anymore. Mainstream has become so inaccessible and so wrought with bullying. Um, but it doesn't feel like a choice anymore. I've had so many friends that have all said that homeschool is the only. Um, accessible and safe learning experience for them. To be able to pursue their career goals in an way that they actually can. And it shouldn't have to come to that.
Britt, thank you very much for sharing your story and James's story. And I think, uh, you could well and truly move from being an aspiring advocate to a very strong. Advocate. You've demonstrated your strength of your advocacy today. And the Commissioners might have a few questions for you, but a big thank you.
Thank you.
And a big thank you from us too. I'll just ask the Commissioners if they've got any questions to you. I'll ask first Commissioner Galbally in Melbourne, you can see on. I'll ask first Commissioner Galbally in Melbourne, you can see on screen whether she has any questions for you.
Um, thank you so much, Britt. That was just really, um, very helpful, um, to us. Um, so your last comment, which is that segregated learning isn't a choice anymore. You, your meaning, I just wanna clarify your meaning. Your meaning because mainstream education is failing to be inclusive and accessible, is that your meaning?
Yes.
And can I come back to your, um, very, um, valuable, you know, comments and experience, even though it was awful for you with teachers' aides? Um, do you think that the teachers' aides had been trained in human rights, in understanding the rights of children with disabilities? Do you think they'd had that training?
Potentially before they, um.
Yeah, yeah.
Potentially when they first started, but they'd been in the industry so long. Um, and they still are, um, that I think, I was talking about it last night, um. They are in it so long with so little support and so little upkeep training that, um, they run themselves to the point that they don't care anymore, it's just a job again.
Yes.
Um, and I don't think that that is the way, the attitude that someone working with a disabled person should have.
Um, you described your, um, your interaction with them as almost they, they kept you from the teacher and from the education that was in the classroom. And by getting that right?
Sometimes it felt that way, yes.
Yes. So, um, well, I think that the curriculum being more adaptive. So your point really is that if mainstream schools were inclusive, it would be good for everybody.
Yeah.
For non-disabled and disabled and that your interaction with your friends would set them up for the future to understand disability and to include people with disabilities all of their lives. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, yeah, I actually have examples of this. My friend, uh, has just finished S E T three in disability support work. Um, and another is training to be a person, aspiring to be a personal trainer and wants to be able to work um, with disabled people to help build up their muscle tone and support them. Um, and I've had that friend that wants to be a personal trainer since grade four. Um.
You're really influencing the whole, the community, yeah.
I actually see it as they, because of the people they are, they were drawn to me. Uh. And the people that, I don't see it as I've inspired them, I see it as their already caring nature kind of blossomed and they learnt through experiences. So I didn't, I didn't help them become who they are, they just were. But they've learnt through what they've experienced with me.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Commissioner Mason.
Um, thank you, uh, Britain also for speaking about your brother as well. I just have one question, um, for different experiences you were sharing. Was there a process in the school, primary school, high school? Uh, of explaining and talking and having a process of complaints or feedback that was a regular part of your experience in school?
Uh, not, not that we were aware of. Mum tried to find her complaints, but everyone kept, uh, complaint process. But everyone kept referring her to someone else and it never seemed to go anywhere. Um. We had memo books for a while where we started every, tried to jot everything down in a memo book. So mum would send messages to and from home. Um. So we still probably have those somewhere, but, and they would be, uh, yeah, filled with little things mum used to write for us. Um, but other than that, no.
Okay. Just one other, uh, question. Um, and, um, as, uh, Ms Eastman said, you know, you're, you're aspiring to be an advocate. Um, and I know just from, from today, you're going to be amazing. When you were in high school, in primary school, when did the moment come that you thought that there was a, a profession or a career and the school, the environment that helped you to do that, where did that penny drop? How did it happen?
It wasn't actually really in high school, uh, in school. I mean, there was an incident where I had to, my mum didn't, my mum is very much like my brother. They're very quick to protect. Um, so my mum's not very diplomatic. Um, so I was her voice when she couldn't express things in a diplomatic way. Um, so I was my brother's advocate through his issues with primary school. I had to come in and have my mum, mum beside me, um, and express a voice for my brother. And that's when I was like, oh, I can do this. And I actually listened. Um. But it wasn't until I had, I had, um, some experience with C P. And an advocate came in to help me, uh, my brother, um, she was amazing. Um, and she kind of showed me, rather than, because technically she couldn't advocate for me because she was a children's advocate and I was just approaching eighteen. She showed me how to advocate for myself and the laws and everything to help me um, do that for me and my brother when she couldn't. Um, and then it kind of fostered that growth. And then after we were out of C P, she, um, works within A C D and they founded the Youth Empowering Peers Programme and she gave me a call and she's like, you don't get a choice, you're coming in. We need you in this programme.
It sounds like the school missed a chance of having your advocacy as part of a student council or that, that process to really help, um, improve the school.
Yeah, we didn't have anything like that.
Thank you so much, Britt.
Thanks.
Britt, you've told us about the awful experiences with the photography teacher. Did you have teachers who you felt understood you and, and supported you in your goals, your aspirations at school?
I had the one in primary school. Um, unfortunately, she was part of that meeting, which is what cut me the most. Um, but she was brilliant and she helped me get to the point where I could go to high school. Um. And she would foster my learning and lend me books and things like that. Um. And then, yeah, in grade eleven and twelve, uh, sorry, nine and ten. Um. I had, I, I was part of the big picture programme. Um, which really fostered a lot of my photography and, um, my learning in that programme and I absolutely loved it.
And the new teacher that you had in photography, did she just help you get to the, where you wanted to go with your study?
With my art and my photography, she was fantastic.
What do you think were the particular characteristics that, uh, allowed her to do that and the other teacher not to be able to do?
She didn't focus on my disability, she focused on my work. So rather than, um, she actually just kind of left me to my own devices and said, if you need me, I'm over here. Or, um, and pointed me to areas that I could access and set up the classroom in an accessible way so that I could just be left to my own devices and, um. Yeah, it was, my disability wasn't pointed out at all. Unless there was something that I brought to attention that, hey, I can't get through this, can we move it? And yeah, no worries, I'll get one of the kids to move it straight away. And that, that's all I needed.
Hmm. And do you follow that up now with photography?
Um, I haven't done a lot of photography work in a while. The only thing I really photograph these days is my dog. Um, but, uh, I'm teaching my little sister, so.
Well, Britt, thank you. I echo what has been said by Commissioner Galblin, Commissioner Mason. Thank you very much for telling us of your experiences and of James's experiences. As far as your aspirations to be an advocate are concerned, I think you have a mixture of determination, courage, and you seem to be the diplomat in your family. So that when you combine all of those three, I think you really will, uh, be able to pursue your goal and you will do it wonderfully. So thank you very much for coming to us and giving evidence today.
Thank you for having me. Thank you.
Ms Eastman, do we break now?
I'm mindful of the time and.
You're always mindful of the time.
But I'm, but I'm also mindful that, that sometimes my estimates of time are totally accurate. Uh, so what we thought we might do is given the time now to adjourn till one thirty. So a little bit ahead, uh, on one level, but a little bit of behind on the other. So if that's convenient for the Commissioners and those, uh, assisting us to adjourn now till one thirty.
We'll do that and thank you again, Britt. We'll now adjourn until, uh, one thirty.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. Silence will stand. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Ms Eastman.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners. Our next witness is Kimberly Lancake and she's going to come up now. And I think Mitch might be joining you or deciding what he wants to do. Okay.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give, uh, evidence. We're very grateful to you and for the, uh, uh, statement that you've prepared, which we have all, of course, read very carefully. Um, I'll ask, if you don't mind, to follow the instructions of my associate who is around the corner and she will administer the oath to you. Thank you.
I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Just to explain, you may well already be aware that Commissioner Galbally, whom you can see on the screen, is joining the hearing from Melbourne. Commissioner Mason is with me in this hearing room, uh, as is Ms Eastman. And I'll now ask Ms Eastman to ask you some questions.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, can I do with some formalities? You are Kimberly Lancake.
Yes.
And we've decided that you like to just be referred to as Kim today.
Yes.
Your address is known to the Royal Commission.
Yes.
And you prepared a statement dated the twelfth of May this year.
Yes.
You've had a chance to look over the statement. Is there anything that you want to change in the statement at all?
No, we've been over it.
And, and the, the matters set out in the statement are true, is that right?
Yes.
Now, Commissioners, the statement is in hearing bundle A behind tab one. This might be an opportunity just to explain about how we're using the documents for this hearing. So there is a hearing bundle and the statements, together with some accompanying background documents, comprise the hearing bundle over a number of volumes. For this hearing, we're not going to be tendering the statements as witnesses give their evidence and the accompanying documents. So we'll follow the approach that we've used in other hearings that at the conclusion of the hearing, we'll consult with the lawyers representing the various parties and agree on the material to be subject to the tender. So just if people were waiting to see statements being tendered after witnesses have completed their evidence, that's not the approach that we're going to take for this hearing. So you've got, you've, you've got your statement there with you and this is all known to you, it's in your head, you've lived and breathed this. So what we are going to do is walk the, the journey that you and your family have had in relation to your son Mitch. And he's with you in the hearing room today.
He is here today.
So thank you, Mitch and Britt for, for joining us as well. So can we just start with a little bit of background about you and your family? And the Commissioners will have read this in the statement. So as I said, Mitch is here, he's twenty years old now, but he's not your only child. So tell us about your family.
Um, proud bub to four neurodiverse sons. Um, my oldest son is twenty-two. Mitch will be twenty-one in September. And I have a ten-year-old son and a nine-year-old son as well. And we have a combination of autism spectrum difference, A D H D, epilepsy, um, global development delay. We've pretty much got a whole mixed bag of neurodiversity in our family.
I think you say in your statement that, uh, you are learning to be a neurotypical mum in a neurodiverse world.
And yeah, that's new learning. I'm a, I consider myself a late learner and that's a label I've just given myself recently.
And for this hearing, you wanted to talk about Mitch's experience, not the, uh, other family members, is that right?
There are some parallels though with having, um, a, a nine-year-old coming through the same system in the same town. So I may mention him. Um, but yeah, we, we, Mitch's journey's been pretty amazing.
And, uh, part, part of reflecting on Mitch's journey, I think, is to say what's happened for Mitch may not be the same as what may happen for your younger sons, is that right?
It is quite different. Yeah, the journey is quite different.
And so that sort of really brought us perspective in reflecting on, um, how Mitch has sort of navigated his way through the education system.
Yeah.
All right. Now I feel like I'm talking about Mitch and he's here. Um, let's, let's know a little bit more about Mitch.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so Mitch was born in Darwin, um, he was my second child. Um, he had a very, um, busy, active young childhood. We, he was diagnosed, um, just before his third birthday. Um, he presented at, um, Child Early Learning, um, without any speech and that was where it was first picked up. Um, and we went through the channels of, um, hearing, a hearing test with basically at the Adelaide Women's Insurance Hospital.
I'm gonna ask you some questions about that, but just sort of stepping back. So he lives with autism and?
Mitch is diagnosed with autism, um, and dyspraxia and there has been a lot of intellectual disability label as well without a formal diagnosis.
And he also has a diagnosis of epilepsy.
Epilepsy is onset puberty, yes.
So he's got a complex, uh, sort of some complex health issues. But also, uh, communication is a really big feature of Mitch's life, is that right?
Mitch is an alternative communicator, he has no verbal structure.
But he does communicate, you say, in simple signs and, and he understands what's going on, is that right?
Very simple level of, um, please, thank you. Uh, we use a lot of visuals now with, you know, visual menus and options that are now available. Um, and he does interact with the very basic, a couple of apps, app-based, um, assistive technology.
And you think Mitch understands a, a lot more than people give him credit for? And why do you have that view?
Um, he has a very cheeky nature, which to me indicates there's more, um, going on than what most people realise. Um, and quite often in conversation, he will indicate his humour that indicates he's, yeah, quite switched on to the conversation.
And, you know, we've heard i- in evidence before the Royal Commission in understanding the experience of people who live with autism, that sometimes changes and transitions can be quite a sort of big deal. But for Mitch, change is not overwhelming, is that right?
Um, we've, I guess, as, from very early on, from his diagnosis, I chose to make a normal life around a special child rather than a special life around a special child. Um, probably for his older siblings' benefit and my sanity as much as challenging him. Um, and we've always done change. So his normal is changeable, so he, he copes with normal. And I think I'm probably the constant that makes the change happen. So while I'm in the mix or constant people are in the mix, he, yeah, he travels, he goes to different places, he's very changeable in his life.
All right. So let's start with early childhood. As you said, Mitch was born in Darwin. And I think you describe him as a fairly laid-back, content baby.
Mm-hmm.
He was a good feeder, happy routine, good, the eat-sleep regime was working well. So a- after his birth and as an infant, nothing sort of caused you any concern at that stage, is that right? So after his birth and as an infant, nothing sort of caused you any concern at that stage, is that right?
He used to chew a lot of unusual things in that around twelve months. You know, I've got home videos of him obsessively chewing on metal objects. And at one point, the tow ball of the car was something that he would go for. And it was like, well, that's really unusual. And, you know, never found anything that he'd eaten. It was always just a chewing obsession. And Mitch is still a chewer to this day. He still loves to chew. So yeah, he does have that sensory. And that was one of the first indicators, that whole sensory profile was very... He's a sponge. And that's probably why he's so adaptable in life too, because he seeks rather than overwhelm.
So when he was about fourteen months old, the family moved to Tasmania.
Yep.
And this was around the time where he was starting to walk.
Yep.
And at this phase, sort of looking at that fourteen-month, two-year period, we're starting to think about options for him in terms of whether it was playgroups, preschool, any early childhood education?
It wasn't particularly on the radar. We moved to the west coast of Tasmania. Went from Darwin to Queenstown, which was quite absurd in itself, with the plan of buying a home without a mortgage. And we were in a very small community, so it was really just playgroup was at the town hall where mum sat and talked, and the kids would run around. That was the only formal, that was the only kind of real interaction he was having with other children. Couple of friends with kids, they were a little bit older. And I probably affected his sibling also being neurodiverse and slower developmentally. He didn't stand out as exceptionally different from his older brother.
So at that stage, I mean, in a small community like Queenstown in Tasmania, you're not there surrounded by paediatricians, nurses, educators?
No, and they were fit and well. So we never visited GPs often, or we didn't have any real connections.
And nothing stood out at that stage to say, do we need to do something? Were you worried at all?
It really wasn't until engaged, after we'd moved back to South Australia, engaged in that formal early intervention through the local Kindy, that that's when the staff indicated, hey, we're really concerned that he's not verbalising, you know, has he had his hearing checked?
So he was almost three when you moved back closer to your family, is that right?
Before turning three.
And so from age three, he was also going to playgroups? And it was part of the playgroup where you noticed that communication issue? And so what was that process about getting a diagnosis? You've described getting the process of diagnosis in your statement. So this is starting to take you into a bit of a health system?
Yeah.
What were the steps involved in that? And what can you tell the Royal Commission about that stage?
So our local GP referred him with suspicion of autism to the Women's and Children's Early Development Unit, Child Development Unit. And we visited on the one day, and he was hearing-checked and diagnosed by the chief medical director on the same day.
So people had said to you, maybe he's got a problem with his hearing, but you didn't think there was any hearing problem? Why was that?
I knew that he could hear very well. I would rattle a packet of chips at one end of the house, and he would come from the other end of the house. He knew he loved chips, and he knew what a chip packet sounded like from a long distance.
So it was, at least as far as you were concerned, it wasn't so much hearing issues, but what seemed to be that delay in communication and connecting to it. You yourself, though, started to put the pieces of the jigsaw together, as you describe it, before you went to the hospital for the diagnosis. And I'm asking you this because, what information is out there? You now know, looking back now over many years, but taking yourself back to that point in time, sort of early 2000s, what information was out there for you to get information to know what the next steps?
It was pre, you know, really, we didn't Google then. There was no, you know, real accessible information. It sounds corny. I watched Rain Man and went to work the next day and said to my boss, I think my son has autism. And, you know, a three-year-old child versus Raymond, very different, but there was something in that movie that triggered me to... And then the conversation with the GP, he went to the word autism straight away. So I knew when we went to the Women's and Children's, as soon as the hearing test said this ear is fine, because he was only sedated long enough to test one ear, yeah, I put my head down and cried and knew it was autism. I had a pretty good, I think I knew instinctively before that point.
Did anyone sort of tell you what would be involved in the testing and what the outcomes of the test might mean for you and for Mitch?
Wasn't a lot of information around, no. The GP had basically done that pre, you know, that pre-warning conversation that he was quite sure it was autism, and he had a great reputation locally. My family had been connected with him for quite a while. So I took his word, and I guess my instincts were sort of facing that as well, with the non-verbal status that he was in.
Right. So Mitch receives the diagnosis just before his fourth birthday. It's one thing to have a diagnosis. It's another thing to say, what will this mean for Mitch? And what supports may he need to live with autism? Immediately after that diagnosis, what information was available to you at that point in time? And what did you do?
On the day of diagnosis, the Child Development Unit gave me a VHS video, which was something like, this is autism. You know, take it home and watch it, and you'll be coming back in seven days to have a follow-up conversation with us. I took the video home and watched it, and the child in the video just presented flapping, basically. And there was not a lot of, you know, there was not a lot of positive spin in the video about pathway for a child with autism. I pretty much became the advocate for him immediately and went, well, took it back seven days later and said, if that's the best information you can give me, it's not very good. You know, and I just went on that sort of, I think first thing I did was started reading. From a parent perspective, I was tracking down autobiographies written by parents with kids on the spectrum and getting the parental perspective very quickly, for my own benefit, I guess. Mitch was no different. He was still the same kid, doing the same things happily in his own world, and we just had the label now.
The next step was then the pathway to kindergarten. And so kindergarten is that year before formal school starts. So there was no question in your mind that that's where Mitch was going, is that right?
So the local Kindy in the small town we lived in had supported his brother. So when we moved back from Tasmania, he was already four, so he went straight into Kindy locally, and they struggled with him. He hadn't, he had no diagnosis at that time. He was quirky and different, but they coped. And from that journey, I knew they wouldn't cope with the non-verbal Mitch at that Kindy. And the Kindy team very quickly connected us with the Pathways Kindergarten at the closest place, which was eighty kilometres away in...
Right. So eighty kilometres away?
One way, yeah.
And this, I think you describe as a disability-specific?
Pathways kindergarten.
Pathway for children who had a diagnosis? So did you have to have the diagnosis to get into these pathways? And this meant just the eighty K's drive there and back, was he going every day at this stage?
So he was doing Mondays and Tuesdays, and I was working for myself, I was self-employed at that point. So I drove him Mondays and Tuesdays and would spend time...
And on the other days, was he in any type of formal childcare?
Well, luckily, they'd just built a childcare facility at our hometown. So he went into three days a week childcare the other days.
So looking at the Pathways program and the childcare, were they connected in any way? And did they sort of speak to each other in terms of supporting Mitch?
Only through conversation with me, you know. And he was in such, it was really just around routine, really, for the first term. And me probably disconnecting. I remember dropping him at Kindy, and the director was amazing. She still is. She's still in that role. And her saying, he's okay, leaving with us, because she knew it was the first time we'd separated.
Take your time.
It always gets me.
Often, you know, for parents, that first step of your child leaving the home and being in an environment surrounded by adults who see your child in perhaps a different way, sometimes that can be very supportive, but sometimes that can have its own barriers. So the Pathways Kindergarten was an anchor point for you, is that right, in the family? And this director had the relationship with you, where you trusted her?
Yeah.
You accepted her advice and was guided by that? And she gave you and Mitch the confidence in terms of what was going to follow?
She was amazing.
Okay. So can you tell the Royal Commissioners, what was it about this Pathways Kindergarten that provided that level of support for Mitch prior to starting formal school? What was it about that worked so well?
They were, because he was so freshly diagnosed, I think they bought tools to us that we hadn't, you know, we were so fresh in our autism journey. So they introduced visuals straight away for, you know, the routine at Kindy. They had very experienced staff, so there was an older, the main teacher in that Pathways. They were staffed, I think, three staff for six children in that Pathways Kindy. So it was very intensive support for him. And yeah, they had huge experience. They were very experienced operators. They'd been in that facility for quite some time. They had it well laid out, that they had their own space, but the kids would spend time in the Kindy around recess lunchtime, and in the afternoons, they were in amongst the yard with all the other kids. They would go on excursions with the whole Kindy. It was, yeah, it was very well managed by the director. She knew her staff.
What about communication? And you heard me say in the opening this morning, and I think in preparation for this hearing, communication is a really central issue in Mitch's story. What was it about the Pathways program that started to open up options in terms of communication for Mitch?
So for him, it was the introduction of visuals, routine, because he hadn't had routine before then. It was his first, and it was his first time as public property out in the world. So yeah, they were very, very well organised. It was, you know, visuals were his first introduction and scheduling.
And in terms of what was sort of happening at home and what might have been happening either at Pathways or the kindergarten, was there a process of sort of bringing together the tools to support Mitch in terms of developing communication?
It was more, I don't remember translating those to childcare or home so much. It was just the introduction there at Kindy. I was a single mum at that point, and I think they saw me struggling and didn't put any extra pressure on for too much to translate out of Kindy. And yeah, we were, our commitment was to the routine, getting him there two days a week and being consistent, and we did that. It was his attendance and getting that routine was really important.
All right. So can I take the next step, which is then moving from the two days a week at kindergarten and starting to enter into the formal school education environment? So the first question, I suppose, is what guided you in the decisions about what type of school would best support Mitch?
We didn't have an option. The only school we had for him was...
So there's no option?
That was it. He had a diagnosis. He'd been in Pathways Kindy. The only direction we had was, Mitch has a place on the North School campus.
So that wasn't a sort of discussion about whether it was either or? And you've heard the Commissioners talk about choice, and you've heard?
We didn't have any other option.
So that was the only option?
Yeah.
Did you accept that option?
Yeah. I didn't have any other place to go. He couldn't attend school in the town we lived in. We'd established a travelling routine. It was kind of a funnel effect. If he was in that Pathways class, he was going to go to that school next. That was the only option for him.
And what was the sort of steps to assist him make that move from the kindergarten setting into primary school? And you've said this out in the statement somewhat. So one aspect of preparation was just that ongoing travelling and support. So that routine about getting to school and getting from school, that you had to have in place?
So we were granted funding for transport, for taxi. So we met the taxi driver the week before school went back. He was amazing local man who'd been driving for many years and still does. And he came and met me and Mitch at home in the week prior to school starting. Came down his own time and did that.
So transport, but what about at the school itself?
I don't remember going and seeing the school, but there must have been one visit where we got a tour of the facilities.
So the special school that Mitch was enrolled in was a public specialist school with a public primary school located on the same grounds.
Correct.
So not, as you've used, the language special school, completely separate, as an exclusive standalone school. It was adjacent to or with the primary school?
Physically, it was on the North School campus, but there was no interaction between classes or even playground. It was separate.
So it effectively could have been, it didn't really matter whether it was there, it could have been anywhere. So it wasn't?
You've said you were given the option. Looking back on it, what other option would you like to have mentioned?
Looking back as to what schools were around at that time, there, and I don't think there would have been another school that would have been a perfect fit anyway. There was only mainstream schools available. And there have been some smaller private schools since, but they weren't built at that time.
So looking back on it, you think in fact that was the only route?
It really, it was the only pathway for Mitch at that time.
So not necessarily there's the primary school and the school that Mitch went to. It wasn't a situation of a special class or a segregated class inside the primary school. They effectively operated as separate entities, and they had different principals, is that right? And different teachers? Tell us about Mitch's sort of beginning in that school setting. What was the transition like for him into school?
So I guess the travelling was something, like he'd done two days a week travelling with me, but he was travelling five days a week to and from, so he would always fall asleep coming home, so he was only little. He was always, because he's that under, he's looking for stimulation all the time. So he took to school quite well. He was wanting us to be busy, and, you know, school gave that opportunity. I don't remember much push around communication, skill building, or anything in the first few years. It was more around attending and, you know, being social in that setting more than structured or, you know, visuals or that learning approach.
Yeah, I think you described the approach in this way, that it was to love them up rather than to challenge the students.
There was.
What do you mean by that?
Yeah, there was different mottos that the school, well, actually promoted them around a child being loved and those sayings, which we felt that was our role as a family to be in that space. Whereas, you know, the school was more around what skills can we build? Yeah, a child that's loved is never forgotten, never forget, something like that was one of their mottos. It was a very casual school in that, you know, there was uniform, but it didn't have to be worn. You know, we did push for meetings at different times to coordinate with them, and they would occur when we pushed. But there wasn't a lot of information shared back from schools to what they were doing and what was going on.
Reflecting back at that time, when Mitch started at the school, was there a sort of coordination between the parents, the teaching staff, and the setting of? and the setting of particular learning outcomes? And also the processes by which to support Mitch to achieve those learning outcomes?
It, there wasn't the structure that we have now around a learning plan or any of those approaches. It was more um meeting and us as presenting, as parents presenting. You know, we're doing this with a speechie, can we talk about how this can be incorporated? Or I went and did um the Hannon principles, which, you know, we structured, structured some meetings around that, but it was still very much driven by us to take that to the school and try and present that to see how we could incorporate it.
And starting school, I mean, y- you've said in the Pathways program that uh he was supported to start to develop his communication skills. Did the initiatives at the Pathways program continue through to the school? And was there a, a program specifically designed to assist Mitch in relation to developing his communication at this early stage of primary school?
I don't remember the picture exchange, even in the simplest form from Kindy translating to school. We did introduce what was called GoTalk nine, which was a very simple switch, basically nine switches, which you could put a picture and you could programme your own voice behind the pictures. And we, um, we were supported in that, in that we would put my lunchbox, his favourite foods out of the lunchbox. And the run interference so that, because food was always a great motivator, um, that if, when it came to lunch, it wasn't just that he sat down with his lunchbox, but he would, uh, would take food and he would actually request it first using the GoTalk nine and to request Lunchbox to start. And toilet was always a big focus. Toilet was always a big focus, a toilet was on there as well, for him to request to go to the toilet.
So this was all uh introduced when he was around seven years old?
Yeah, it was in the first, um, yeah, within, yeah, grade one or two. And that was basically the technology that was available then, you know, they have amazing iPad versions.
When you reflect back on this uh move from Pathways to the special school, I think your perspective is that when he was at school, he was really just being babysat and you felt like Mitch was just killing time rather than being challenged, is that right?
There was one year in particular when his, it felt very much like the mu- the teach, the classroom teacher was who set the tone for the success and what the challenges were that they tackled. There was one year in particular where he had, and I think it was very detrimental, he had the same teacher two years in a row. And they became a husband and wife team in the classroom, and I think it was a ground, grade four. And that year felt very much like it was just a treading water year, that really nothing, nothing was challenged, nothing was put up, nothing was really structured, it was turn up. Um, swimming was routine, once a week they'd go to the heated pool, and that was probably the highlight of the week. For actually achieving a goal or having uh something in it, that there were times when, um, you know, today Mitch ran a string around the classroom was one example that I remember. And I remember thinking, well, what is educational in that? What is actually, you've just really killed time today in a room that was safe. And that was with those two teachers.
And a- as um his parent, was there any sort of a agreement at the beginning about what your role would be or how you could contribute to Mitch's education in terms of what was happening in the classroom?
Um, it was never really a priority. It was, and it felt at times it was you to drop them off here at the door and that's it. And that was quite, for quite a few years at the, at that school.
And you say that you felt sidelined and that this sort of had a sense that school was siloed from Mitch's life in a, in a way. Why, why was that?
Well, it was very much, he got in the car, he went to school and he came home in the afternoon. We, we pushed for meetings or discussion around a particular approach that we were taking through, you know, work with the speechie or the, what we were doing out in our own life. It was us bringing that forward. It wasn't, um, there was no structured learning that program, no structured meeting even, probably twice a year where you'd get together and say, okay. Um, if there was a concern, if there was a behaviour of concern, yes, we would meet. Um, Mitch was always a climber, still is, um, and there were some incidents where he's climbing um, around the, I think he could probably navigate the fence even to get out. Um, that became a concern. I remember us having meetings for that.
Okay, and that, and I think you've uh provided to us some communications books. So there was a, a book that went back and forth between home and school each day, but did that come in later?
School, that was only for high school.
Later, why? But nothing like a communications book?
We may have had it in the final year of primary school, but I don't remember it being in the early years.
What about allied health uh support at school? So I, we assume that with the diagnosis of autism, that Mitch would need allied health support at different points in his life, but also to sort of get a sense of what supports he actually needed. Where did you go with allied health and how did that fit within the school system?
Um, we did have connection through Disability S A in the later years of primary school, um, through that old funding, um, where we had an O T. And there was conversation around speech connection through the Education Department, provided speech pathologist. Um, I got the impression it was, they were more in like a group setting. There, it didn't really seem like there was strategy for Mitch as such that came from those engagements through school. Um, psychologist reports were provided by Education Department's psychologists. Um, they were, they were none of, never out ranging or, and they were mainly for the funding, I believe. Um, but yeah, it was very ad hoc. Um, I don't remember ever having connection with the education provided allied health in a meeting or strategy building as such. Um, that is certainly a different kettle of fish now with, in the eyes.
So when we, we get towards the end of Mitch's primary school years and you're starting to think about the transition to high school, Mitch had a, a teacher who you described as amazing
Yeah, he was a excellent teacher.
The final year at primary school. What was it about this teacher that was different to their experience?
She was quite a bit younger and dynamic from the teachers he'd had in probably grade five and six. Um, they, they were, I don't mean it nasty, they'll be old and stagnant in being at a special school for quite a few years. And she was fresh blood into the school. Um, she saw him in a different light. She had that belief that, you know, the potential's not limited with someone with, on the spectrum. So she did challenge him. She, I, I still have on the wall a poster she'd made at the end of the year, which was two handprints and two footprints done in paint, and it was, um, you know, my heart and soul was connected to you like mum. She, she actually had a connection with each child. Um, and we wrote a reference for her, um, for the fi- in the following year, which, um, I found and it really did highlight how amazing she was.
Do you want me to read that?
Yeah, that'd be great, good.
So Commissioners, this is part of Kim's statement, but the reference said this. We knew from the onset that twenty fourteen was going to be different when in the first week, the teacher sent notes home in the communication book, wanting to know what made Mitch respond and how to get into his world. We had never had this engagement or enthusiasm from any teacher prior to and have had it in the first week of term one was very exciting for us. Twenty fourteen turned out to be just as exciting a year for Mitch as the first week had promised. So you remember writing that reference?
Yeah, we wrote that the following year.
So that, that, it's a big year, the final year of primary school. And looking back on uh that point in time, you know, what, what was the planning or thinking in relation to the next steps for Mitch?
Um, my ex-husband and I were very um committed to finding the best option for Mitch. Um, we travelled to Victoria at one point and visited an amazing school in Bendigo. And we actually put an offer on a house in Bendigo. We were prepared to move to get him into that school. Um, which just had a total different, it was a disability school from reception to year twelve. It was, that's what their business was. And um we weighed up that as an option. We were pretty committed to getting him into the best space possible. Um, and then in the connection with school, at the end, as we approached, actually it was mid-year, um, around June, um, the offer came from the Education Department for Mitch to attend um, which, um, I was given basically seven days to accept the offer. Um, and with no other option available, um, we did accept the offer. Um, but we did keep thinking in the back of our minds, if something better comes along, we will be doing what we can to make it happen. It wasn't finite. Um, and in August of year seven, we did a transition um tour of the High School Disability Unit. And in that, we were given promotional materials showing their senior class programs. Um, they had an amazing textile program, um, a beautiful, um, nearly commissioned commercial kitchen, uh, two classes running. Um, we toured the facilities, we talked about communication strategies. And we were quite surprised at what we found. Um, we were pleasantly surprised that, hey, got this locally. We, we don't need to go making world change to move to Bendigo to find a great school. So the acceptance, you know, we continued with that, um, after the tour in August and were confident that he would have a good place at a local high school.
And it, to be ready for the transition, did Mitch have to undergo any testing or updated diagnoses?
There was psychologist assessments done, and I'm not sure if one was in that year or if it was in the previous year that indicated he would need to continue in the disability s- stream of the education.
Was there any discussion at all about stepping outside a specialist scheme and into using the language of mainstream, into a mainstream class with supports?
No, um, that was purely our looking around at other options. And even in doing that, we were looking at a disability specific school. We, you know, Mitch's communication deficit meant we didn't think he would cope or peers or teachers would cope with him in a mainstream environment.
Reflecting back just again, we're on that cusp of, of high school. Uh, from when Mitch started as a little one in the uh reception through to being a big one in the primary school, uh, ready for high school, what change had occurred in his ability to communicate and engage at home, at school, and in the broader community?
So we had implemented, um, so technology had, you know, led us to ProLoQuot Go, um, assistive communication with the, with an iPad. Um, so we had implemented that after the GoTalk nine.
Tell us about that and how that works.
Yeah, that was, I think, in years, right at the end of primary school. Um, so that is um app-based, uh, it has a core, what they call a core screen, which, um, and it was probably the first assistive technology that it could actually speak. As, let's say, you press the button, it had a visual, it had matched the text communication um, system, so it has a visual and the word, and when you press the button, the iPad spoke the word for you. So we found that through a workshop, um, and were absolutely, you know, this could be the thing that Mitch could talk with for the rest of his life.
Had that come, sorry to interrupt, did that come through school?
No, we found that ourselves.
Or was that out, just your own inquiry?
I'm not, I'm not even sure how the workshop crossed our paths, but we actually got to meet with the designer of the software in a one-day workshop and other. And um we, we ran with it, we just put it out to family, please give him Apple um vouchers for Christmas. This is the app we want to buy and it's expensive, so, um, and we want to get him an iPad as well. So we started him off, um, and we were engaged with some speeches at that time. And, you know, different tweaking of let's reduce the core screen to less buttons, so it's more navigatable, so it's easy to navigate, um, bring it back to words of interest, you know, round food options and run that interference to, um, and the principle behind it is obviously a lot of modelling. Everyone needs to be showing, you know, speaking the word, pressing the button, having the, you know, communication generated to show him how to use it. So we started that in year seven and, yeah, the plan being that the iPad travelled with him everywhere, charged overnight, um, and just use it at every opportunity to wave words under his nose to help him understand that he could generate words that way.
And di- did you see a change in terms of Mitch with using these new technologies?
It takes so many repetitions for someone of Mitch's ability maybe to pick up a tool to get it to an extent that you could actually have a conversation. Um, but for us, it was just even the lightbulb moment of him, you know, using it to indicate toilet to someone to, in a unplanned moment, because it meant that he was actually initiating the communication rather than it being prompted. Like, we could do time training, time toileting till the cows come home. But for the one time that he's, we're out somewhere and he actually tells you he needs to go to the toilet, was a success because it meant he was initiating it, he was initiating the communication. So, um, we started very simply and just built slowly on it.
There's one more thing that happened towards the end of primary school that was quite an important moment and may, uh, had an influence on your thinking about what might happen next. And this is the assistance dog. So when Mitch was eleven, he received some funding for a companion dog. Uh, and I won't say the name, but you know who I mean. And, um, the dog had undergone all her training and you thought that this dog would connect with Mitch and also support him and assist him in communication and confidence, is that right?
As, as a companion and a, yeah, as that plus one.
Okay, and at that time, the autism assistance dogs were not particularly well-known and uh not probably a feature.
And she wasn't an autism assistance dog, she was purely a companion dog.
And you wanted to get permission for the dog to attend school with Mitch? And what was the outcome of making that suggestion?
So we did an assessment with the Department of Education psychologist based locally, um, which wasn't, which was in a outdoor setting. Um, and Mitch didn't demonstrate the ability to control the dog as such. Um, and so it was declined. Um, at that time, I don't, there were autism assistance dogs beginning to be utilised, but, um, they hadn't been, they weren't well, they weren't established. Um, so we were a bit, we were groundbreaking, and I think we've kind of always been that way. We've always been the first to run with the assistive technology and ask schools to have that. We were probably the first family to ask, can this assisti- assistance dog come to school? Um, we always pushed boundaries. We were a bit out there wanting to do more.
But the dog wasn't able to go to school, is that right?
She was declined, um, based on the obs- obs- observations of Mitch and her in the outdoor environment, that they didn't feel he would, he'd had the skills to control the dog and it would be a disruption in the class.
All right, then, um, let's get to the transition to high school. I think you reflect on it now and say, with the benefit of hindsight and seeing your other children coming through, is there wasn't a lot of planning for students at that time from that transition from the primary setting into the high school setting? And for you, not a lot of information about what to expect and what would be required of the family as part of that transition process, is that right?
Um, we presume there was transfer of information between the schools, but there was not a formal or structured, let's get together and transition and have a discussion around how you think transition should look. Um, apart from Mitch being assisted to attend to the new school. Um, I think there was two days in one week at the end of term four. Um, so, and we weren't involved in it, our tour was separate. Um, so we kind of saw a facility tour and then Mitch did an in-person visit. Um, I don't know what information was transferred between schools.
And I think I asked you a little earlier about whether there had to be any sort of further testing or any new diagnoses. And I think you mentioned that there might have been a psychologist's report.
Yeah.
Do you remember a psychologist's report that, uh, I think you've seen a copy of it? That described Mitch as having a primary diagnosis of autism. But also an estimate of his cognitive functioning would place him in the severe range of intellectual disability.
So that was mentioned in the report that when we were looking. The dog attending school. So the psychologist that did the assessment around the assistance dog indicated that he felt there was a severe intellectual disability. Um, it had never been penned or included in a report. Um, and it was around, but it stated that this was not, you know, under a formal diagnosis.
Well, a diagnosis of intellectual disability in what was described as a severe range was not a diagnosis that.
It was never formally completed, no.
And, uh, have you taken any steps to confirm whether or not the opinions of the psychologists. Were accurate or correct?
From that point, it, it kind of became included in reporting that Mitch had an intellectual disability diagnosis. But it, it was always the disclaimer that this is never, that it wasn't formally completed due to his lack of communication. Um, so, no, we never, we never chased it, we never pursued an intellectual disability diagnosis.
Were you required by, um, anyone in the school setting to have to go and.
No.
See if this should be confirmed or not?
Because I think from the point of that report, it, it box just started to get ticked. And it, I don't know, I don't really know whether they, they did it on the grounds of that initial, that assessment.
When you're saying the box just had to be ticked, I think we've sort of seen some of the enrollment documents and there literally are boxes.
Yeah, yeah, there are boxes and it's ticked, autism and intellectual disability.
Did anyone say to you, well, if this box is ticked or that box is ticked, this might be the pathway for your child in high school?
I just presumed it'd give more funding for ESOs for him to be in that stream, I didn't really question it.
Then, so, so high school can be sort of characterized with this understanding that Mitch lived with a primary diagnosis of autism. But also was treated as having a, in the severe range of intellectual disability. Do you think reflecting back over Mitch's years, that having that description of his lived experience with disability. Meant that, and I'll use that sliding door, that there was a sliding door moment there in terms of what might be. The opportunities for him and how he may have been treated in that, the education system?
I think expectations were lower, um, I've always advocated that the potential is unlimited. Um, and that someone on the autism spectrum just learns through repetition and being guided. Um, I, I do think expectation of Mitch was capped very much at school. Um, and that they did focus on behaviour a lot rather than positive reinforcement and, and result.
Can you remember reflecting back at this time of moving from the primary to the high school environment? What were your expectations for Mitch? What did you want to see happen?
Goal was to have the communication device supported in every setting. Um, you know, for it to be alongside him at school and for it to be, um, modelled, you know, ev- every opportunity. We weren't excluding other communication options, we understood that having, um, there were some basic visuals that were on the desktop. Um, and that they did continue from primary school, I believe, they were just a couple of simple. And it may have been toilet and yes, no. Um, so we weren't excluding every other way of communicating with Mitch, but we wanted. The effort to be, the commitment to be there the same as what we were wanting at home, doing at home. To make, we understood that it took a lot of, um, thousands of opportunities of modelling for those, that. Communication to develop. And that was really our only, you know, obviously we wanted him to participate in water safety, because he loved swimming. Um, and that was a shining light of going through high school and primary school, is that they did water safety once a week. And he, he is, he's very safe in the water. Um. Yeah, we didn't have a lot of expectations apart from that.
We're going to get, eh, eh, as we go along to finishing school, but thinking about the start of high school. Did you have any goals or expectations of how school would support Mitch for life after school? Were, were you thinking that far ahead at that time?
Well, we certainly had no grand illusions of him going to university or being in an academic stream. Um, it was all around, you know, and because there was the, um, the cooking, the commercial kitchen. At the school and also that textile program, which was in the senior years. You know, we were always very focused on life skills, what can transfer from school into life skills. What, you know, what path will he have, we really don't know, but communication was a really important part of all of it. Um, if he can communicate, basically, he can at least exercise choice. Um, and so, yeah, we weren't, we weren't really shaping a specific pathway for Mitch up, but we were winging it. You know, we were winging it right until the end of year eleven and then I just drew a line in the sand and went, no, there's got to be a better place for you. To, for this final year, transition out of school.
So the unit that he was going to go into was made up of two classes. One was a junior class and one was a senior class. And about twenty kids in each class and two to three teachers for each class.
Um, so one, so two primary teachers, but SSOs as well flowing around.
Helping Mi- Mitch get ready for that transition to high school. Did he do any tours of the school or have any orientation before he started?
I think there were, I don't remember going with Mitch from, in year seven to being with him at the school. I just remember us doing a tour, um, there may have been some notes around him doing one visit.
And going into the unit with the two classes, the junior and the senior. Are we to understand that in those two classes, that there would be, uh, children of, of a particular age range? So if he's coming in as the youngest, there'd be older children in that junior class and then moving up to the senior class.
So it's kind of like an eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve thinking. And in that dynamic, there were children who were quite a bit older. Um, so Mitch's peers now from school while he's twenty, summer twenty-three. So while there may have been, you know, that grouping of year, there were quite a wide range of age.
And wa- was there any, if you can remember, any preparation for going into an environment where you're coming in as the youngest in the class? And there's older people, older, older kids who might have been there for a period of time?
No, I, I don't remember any of that being a priority or what we discussed with him starting.
And the school itself, so again, just, was it a unit within a, a regular mainstream school? Or were they sort of separate campuses like?
Not on the grounds of the local high school, um, with a very deliberate fence around it. It was a fenced area for the disability unit.
What was the extent to which the children and young people in the disability unit. Were involved in the day-to-day activities of the regular high school?
They weren't.
Not at all?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Did it feel segregated from the community of the school?
There were a couple of kids that had friends who were mainstream students, um. And I don't believe that those friendships were even really encouraged, like they could talk to them through the fence. But no, there was no, not that I'm aware of.
What about the preparation for travelling to school? So the transport arrangements have to change?
So we'd had taxi for all of his primary school, which we were really grateful for because it was, we did live, you know, significant distance from school. Um, and we, so we made the conscious choice to move. So, because his older brother was also travelling for school to. Time, so which was his own dynamic in itself. So we, um, and we were lucky enough that we could, our work supported that we could buy another house and move, so we moved. And got us, got ourselves in a position that we were local for Mitch to start year eight.
So was the transport then in place and was that critical for you?
To our surprise, um, the taxi turned up on day one of term one to pick him up, which we weren't expecting. We figured, well, we live in the local town, um, we will be getting him to and from school, but the taxi turned up and so we happily put him on. Um, and obviously it was a different dynamic, it was a small mini bus because they were coming from. Direction with six to eight kids, Mitch would be the final pickup and then they'd literally five minutes to the high school.
And did that arrangement last for the whole of Mitch's schooling? How long did it last?
It didn't last very long at all, um, I think it was within term one, um, we were told. Um, and this was probably the first communication concern I had with the high school.
When you're, sorry, pausing, when you're talking about communication, we're not talking about Mitch's.
No, communication between the, the disability unit and us as parents. Um, so, yeah, this is a purely parental communication.
All right, what happened?
Um, so we were advised by the principal of the disability unit that Mitch had been, um, behaviour of concern in the taxi. And that he'd kicked the back of the seat, um, and that he was now suspended from the taxi. Because the taxi driver had attempted to talk to us about it and we didn't seem interested. Now, my hus- my ex-husband and I do not have cognitive difficulties. Um, neither of us had been spoken to about it, we both looked at each other and went, well, I don't know who they talked to. But it wasn't me, was it you? No, it wasn't me. Um, so we were told that a conversation with us had occurred, which it hadn't. We weren't really told of what the dynamic was in the taxi, he does have a habit of, like, you know, would put his foot up or would push the back of the seat. And I presume that's what happened. Um, we were a little bit, well, don't like the way you've gone about telling us that he's now longer on the taxi. We were kind of in a mindset where we didn't expect to have a taxi anyway now that we'd moved, so let's just roll on, let's just get him to and from school every day.
Well, didn't, um, the disability unit tell you that they had done a risk assessment?
Um, yeah, we were told of a risk assessment and we were given a template form of what the risk assessment involved. But we never saw, we never saw correspondence of who the driver was, what the conversations were, what the incident report was. We were just told Mitch was no longer on the taxi.
Was that a risk assessment as far as you knew about Mitch being a risk?
Yeah, about the behaviour, I understand.
Or about the way in which the transport was organised, being the risk to him?
The risk was his behaviour, they were risk assessing his behaviour in the taxi.
And you had no consultation in that process at all?
We weren't aware of it until we were told he's no longer on the taxi and this is what occurred and so, well, we weren't actually. We don't know who you spoke to, we don't know who the taxi driver spoke to, but it wasn't us. Whether it was my oldest son looking vague on the front of the rounder and he presumed it was dad, I don't know.
But, but was there a communication book that was used about that, the travel to and from school as well?
We had communication book in place from, yeah, day one of year eight.
And had, uh, Mitch being assessed as a risk or having to be assessed for risk purposes. Ever raised in the communication book?
No, there was no, we were, we were blindsided, we had no understanding of what had happened or we had a communication conversation to win.
Right, I'm just sort of looking at the time, commissioners, and just mindful of our Auslan interpreters. And we, I might ask if we can take a break in a moment, but I just want to finish on this topic before we take a break. And that is, looking back, your perception of the events was that there was never any consultation about Mitch's capability. And there's an issue about Mitch riding bikes that really brought home that sense of. Mitch's capability and his activities at home and how he may well have been perceived at school in terms of his. Capacity and capability at school. Can you tell us about that and then commissioners, if we might take a, a short break of ten minutes just to give everybody, uh, a comfort still?
Yeah, the bike riding project was in year eleven. Um, and the University of South Australia was involved with, I don't know whether our PE students or what the, their capacity was with our physio students. But they create, there was a project that underwent, um, didn't really know a lot about it. Um, but I did find notes, um, in the communication book later, so we obviously were where it was coming up. Um, and it was riding trikes. Now, we'd spent years teaching Mitch to ride a bike from when he was probably started at four. And by the time he was eight, he was riding a BMX, um, and it gave him amazing freedom. We, you know, we took a lot of risks with bike riding, but it's so worth it because he still rides today. Um, and, yeah, there was a project at school where they were riding trikes and I don't know if they were doing like X number of distance. To create like a marathon bike ride or what it was. Um, but there was, you know, great celebration that, you know, he came home with a certificate. And somewhere in that conversations, um, we were coming towards the end of year eleven. And I was totally frustrated that they hadn't asked about his capacity to ride a bike and he was put on a trike. Like, this kid can ride a bike, why did you not ask, why did we not have a two-wheeler bike? Um, the feedback I got was, I chose to buy the trikes, which was what I was told. And so, well, we could have provided a bike. Um, I chose to buy trikes was what I was told by the, the principal of the disability unit. So we weren't given the opportunity and we actually did indicate earlier, um, that he can ride a bike. But he wasn't supported to ride a bike, he was put on a trike. So, and I'm sure he enjoyed the trike riding, I'm sure he participated in it wonderfully. And he actually came home with the certificate that he'd aced it, you know, that that was his big moment of success. But for me, it was quite bittersweet, it was like, well, I don't want that certificate, he can ride a bike.
And you felt that this was where there were gaps in, uh, communication. So for the school to be able to hear from you and talk to you about Mitch's capacity. And the things that he liked doing when he wasn't at school, and you really wanted that to build into the way in which the school was supporting him. And you felt there was a bit of a, a sort of gap there, wasn't there?
He is an alternative communicator, if you want to know something specific about Mitch, the obvious person to ask is his mother. You know, can Mitch ride a bike? I'd sent the note, yes, Mitch can ride a bike, and then it was ignored. So, you know, but there was, there wasn't that asking, you know, there wasn't that seeking of information from us. It felt like, we know what we're doing and this is the decision we've made and Mitch is a part of this programme and that's it. It wasn't, wasn't tailored to him, it wasn't, it was like, yeah, presumed that Mitch couldn't ride a bike. And even though we presented that information, it was not acted upon.
Um, so commissioners, it's two thirty-seven now, we break for, uh, just a, a short break this afternoon. And then we'll come back and we're going to look at school curriculum.
Twelve and a half minutes and we'll come back at two fifty.
Two fifty, thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, thank you for returning. Yes, Mrs.
Uh, so commissioners, we're now at the high school stage. And commissioners, if you're following along with the statement, I'm at around page fifteen, paragraph seventy-one. So Kim, when Mitch started school, the high school was part of a trial for what was described as one plan. And what's your, or what was your understanding of one plan back at that point in time?
Um, a document to shape accommodations and curriculum for anyone in a, with special needs within that disability stream.
Was that sort of inten- was it, your understanding was intended to be a negotiated education plan that was specific for Mitch?
I believed it was, yeah, but, but we sat down and discussed the specifics around what would work best for Mitch.
And was that, uh, a process of working through one plan, of having parents working with the school?
One meeting to discuss the one plan with the principal of the disability unit.
So one meeting, but not an ongoing process?
No, and it felt like it was backwards in that we were doing it at the end of each year rather than the start. Which I gathered shaped the following year, but it wasn't reviewed regularly. And it was quite a big document at the start, like it covered every accommodation. It felt like it was a bible for every accommodation and every student rather than a, whereas we'd come from year seven. With a two-page negotiated education plan with very simple goals. To a quite a big volume bible document which didn't really speak a lot about Mitch.
If the purpose of this, to your understanding, was to identify the adjustments and the supports that he needed. How were you in a position, I'm not being critical, but how were you in a position to know what those adjustments and supports might be? In a high school. To know what those adjustments and supports might be in a high school setting? Particularly if the, uh, One Plan trial was just being rolled out. And you had no experience for Mitch in high school.
We didn't really know what we were doing with it. I do remember seeing the first One Plan that we'd done. And really the only thing we added to it was that we wanted Mitch to do a birthday card for his grandfather for, in October. And we wanted, I think, a Mother's Day card or something like, like that was the only real thing we added to it. It was a pretty overwhelming document to sort of get your head around.
Well, I think you've described in the statement of there being a template type document that set out that. Um, identification of the adjustments or supports. But it also had something that helped describe what Mitch's disabilities were. And that had to be documented as well. Is this a, an example of the, the description of Mitch having an intellectual disability? In the severe range coming into the planning?
Um, I just remember the autism and the intellectual disability being ticked on it. Um, I don't, and I'm pretty sure by the time we got to the end of year eleven. The final One Plan meeting we did was pretty much the same document with all that same information in it. With maybe a tailored statement on the end of the back page that we contributed. It wasn't, it didn't feel like it was a working document that had much purpose from my perspective.
Do you have any recollection as to whether or not the One Plan process looks specifically? At educa- at, at communication supports in education?
Um, I just remember being quite overwhelmed about it being all the curriculum focused in there. Not remembering it having a lot of specific comment around how Proloquo go was being. Applied for that curriculum.
So again, was it your experience that there was a disconnect in supporting Mitch? In developing his communication skills, particularly with the new technologies? And the planning in relation to what he could achieve with respect to the curriculum?
Yeah, it felt like there was a very big gap between what tools we were trying to implement to make. Because under communication underpinned everything. Um, and in reviewing a lot of Mitch's, like the two and three documentations between me and school. School itself, it seemed like there was a lot of focus on the difficulties with Mitch. But not getting back to that underlying communication being the frustration for him. Like if there was a behaviour presenting, I would quite often read it as, he actually doesn't have any way to tell you what he's. Frustrated by and why he's acting out in that way, but you're not giving him the opportunity to give you that either.
Look, looking back, so again, I know I'm taking you a little bit front and then back, but looking back. Uh, and the One Plan process, do you think with the benefit of hindsight? Addressing those communication issues very early on, at the start of high school, should have been the priority focus?
For a child that's non-verbal and can't express those points specifically. Um, and the experience I have now with my youngest son. Strategy around how we will do this more specifically for him. Rather than all the detail of every tool that's going to be available, a simpler One Plan, more specific. Would have been much more useful for us.
Again, sticking at the end of school, by the end of high school, Mitch can't sign his own name. He does not have basic reading and writing. He does not have the skills to hold a pen or even a digital pencil. And you don't know whether achieving basic reading, writing. And the capacity to use a pen, be it digital or otherwise. Was ever a goal for Mitch when he started high school, is that right?
Those simple goals weren't a part of that One Plan, were they?
Again, with the benefit of hindsight, do you see basic reading and writing? Signing your name and being able at least to hold a pen as being part of the tools to build communication?
It all connects to using the visuals, to using the assistive technology. The, you know, the ability to demonstrate maybe spelling of a word to match a visual. Would have led to that communication device being more usable for him. Um, I think the building blocks were missed in those initial, in that planning. I think the end goals of the curriculum were probably placed first. And rather, and it was sort of working backwards rather than working forwards from a very basic communication level.
What, what do you feel he has achieved in terms of meeting the goals from One Plan and the curriculum by the time he finished school?
He, he attended and was pleasant in his attendance. Um, he enjoyed all the social interaction and, um, being around. And there were some key teachers that he loved having time with. Um, but academically, no, I don't think Mitch achieved very much at all.
You have said, uh, that there were some highlights of his time in the disability unit. A mum was the zoo. Why is that a highlight?
Um, there were some key players. There was a one, um, young male teacher. Who was very interested and engaged with the Proloquo and, um. A lot of communication between him and us in the communication books around strategy and, you know, changing between call screens. And, you know, wanting to work with that team environment with the speechy as well. Um, so there were key players who had, and I think that teacher in particular. Had a very keen interest in assistive technology and was younger and wanted to, you know, work in that space. Um, there was other teachers that were more around, you know, life skills and socialising. And being in that space with them at school. Um, yeah, and like I said, the swimming was an amazing thing. Um, but there's not a lot of, not a lot of great that I take from his journey. We made the decision to move schools for year twelve based on that.
And I, I've come, I've come to that. I mean, one of the issues you, you've also raised is. You expected that there may be more focus on life skills. The Royal Commission's heard that for children and young people who only have the opportunity of education. In the segregated settings, sometimes there's too much emphasis on life skills at the expense of other. Areas, for example, curriculum, uh, literacy, numeracy, those sorts of things. For you, life skills was something that you expected would be part of the way in which Mitch was able to learn. At his school in high school. Why was it important for you in terms of a focus on life skills? Particularly life skills to assist him for the transition from school. And into whatever life was going to hold him after school.
Well, I think when you've got a child that is very. Deplete of, you know, major communication. Um, you know, it comes down to what can they do to make their life meaningful? So for him to be now functioning as a twenty-year-old, we very focused on, and we always looked forward. We always looked forward to life after school, um, you know, step closer to leaving home is a motto we use a lot. Um, and life skills have always been important for us, more so, we, we knew Mitch would not be academic. Um, so, yeah, it was important for us for him to, um, you know, even to be able to. There were times when he would actually jump on the public transport to go to school. And to have that encouraged as a part of his school journey, which was difficult. Um, you know, and he's not straightforward. He's not an obvious person that can do those things without supports around him. Um, but we found them. We found, you know, the neighbour that would go on the bus with him and she was at the same school. Um, it was, the frustrating part was the school wasn't open to that. Outside thinking from us, that we want this to be a, a focus and something that we work on. But there always just seemed to be the barrier because no one else is doing this, so why do you want to do this? Whereas we, we wanted him to have skills that would transfer past school. You know, there's a long life after year twelve.
Mitch, uh, became an NDIS participant when he was about fourteen years old. Can I ask you about what it meant for Mitch? And also in terms of supports generally with your family. By this stage, you've got the little fellas as well. Um, wha- what, what difference did the NDIS make in terms of Mitch and his schooling?
Um, I don't think it actually did much for school. Um, it meant we could engage, um, speech and OT. Um, and we did find some great local providers. Um, but it meant they were working separate, they were seeing Mitch out of school. Um, we did inquire about how those allied health could become a part of a team meeting. And it was incredibly difficult. Um, we understood that therapy couldn't happen at school. Because if we had ten different speeches and ten different OTs coming in, it would be chaos. Um, but at the same time, we weren't really supported with the strategy. And the work that they were doing to be incorporated into a team meeting or planning either. So we weren't, it was disconnected. But it did, NDIS gave us the funding to engage those people directly. To work one-on-one with Mitch, whereas before that, we'd had, we had had a good OT through Disability SA, which was prior to NDIS funding. But we hadn't had, um, speech and they were supporting all our work around using the assistive technology. So it did give us support to go and do, you know, learning around modelling, how to use that device better. How to incorporate that in day-to-day life better. But then it never, it felt like it didn't transfer to the education space.
I think it's a case, wasn't it, that when Mitch first became an NDIS participant? The case manager you had, you described as amazing. Because the case manager looked at the family dynamic, thought about what was needed. And tried to take a sort of holistic approach as to what supports did Mitch need. But not disconnected from the family. Is that right?
Um, he saw us with the two younger siblings in the mix. So Mitch was ten when they were born, when they were born. And he saw us, I think, unraveling a little bit. And if his actual, you know, conversation was, if we don't get you in quickly. Um, I can see you're gonna, you know, need more than just support from Mitch. So, yeah, he, he saw, um, wisely a family that was under a fair bit of pressure. And got us in earlier than other kids his age.
Do you feel that the way in which the case manager, uh, worked with your family? That was a, a model that could have assisted in terms of working with the family from a school perspective? Or were they sort of quite different issues?
He was based with Disability SA, so yes, he could have had a key sort of role. As an intermediary between, you know, the OT that was provided there, himself as the case manager and the school. Um, but that was not something that was, you know, that wasn't, that, that team approach wasn't on the table.
Just to be clear about the timing, this is happening when Mitch is about ten.
Uh, fourteen for NDIS.
Yeah, I thought you said the, uh, case manager was from Disability SA.
It's around, so my, so he was ten when his siblings were born. So, no, it would have been a bit later. It would have been, um, when he was fourteen that we got the plan. But he would have been engaged with Disability SA for a couple of years. So around twelve, they would have engaged with him.
So with, with Disability SA, was that pre-ndi-?
Yes, yeah, that was in.
Participation in NDIS?
Yes, it was in that bucket funding phase.
And did you have the same experience with once the NDIS came in?
Um, we didn't have a case manager approach then because we were directly engaging OT and speechy. As, as I was engaging him as his nominee.
Want to now move to, uh, that period of time where you're starting to look at the transition for Mitch. From school to life after school. So the NDIS is in place by this point in time. And, uh, you're starting to focus on the educational outcomes for Mitch. And the planning for the next steps. So we're at that point in time. You remember going to a group, a parent group meeting at the high school around July twenty eighteen? And you were, uh, and you asked, what's the plan for students who would soon be finishing year twelve? What happened at that meeting?
So we were still connected with the high school, um, and Mitch was in year eleven. Um, and there were parents there who had year twelve students. And they were seeking services, they were looking in Adelaide, they were looking in different places. We're trying to connect with, you know, whether it be employment support options. Or there was really only one disability employment provider in our town. So they were, you know, the, the questions were being asked around what happened there, what, how suitable it was. Um, and so we, um, one, the mum was a bit of a key player around. Can we all get together as parents? Can we use the space at the school? And that was supported by the school and we used the commercial kitchen area to meet. Um, and the principal of the unit, um, attended. And I think we had one meeting in onsite, maybe two meetings onsite. And then we kind of just resorted to email after that. Um, and in that meeting, um, it opened with the principal showcasing. A project that the unit was doing around, um, social interaction with robotics. You know, one was a, like a man and one was a seal. Um, and how the kids interacted with these robots and it was a part of a CSIRO study. Um, so that was discussed probably for a good ten, fifteen minutes. Um, and we all got to meet the robot and the, the seal. Um, and, but our, as parents, our key drive was what can we do around how we transition our children out of school? Which is what we were all about meeting for. Um, and I interjected at the probably fifteen minutes in. And said, you know, thanks for the talk about the project, but we were all concerned about where our kids are going after school. And is there any opportunity that as the principal of this unit? Who knows these children from the four to five year journey you've had with them? That you could give us any direction around what options are available? Think, you know, it could go. Um, it was basically replied with, none of your children are suitable for the provider that was the disability support in town. And that was the only one. Um, and which I then led to, well, is there any opportunity for parents to have a one-on-one discussion with you? Around what you think could be a transition for these children? Um, which was, you know, yeah, basically.
Not quite bothered, weren't you, either, or sort of annoyed, worried by the fact that? To to, to be told these kids were not even going to be suitable.
Yeah, none of you kids are suitable.
For the disability employer. So that was our local ADE, was it?
Um.
Disability, uh, Old Fashioned Shelter Workshop?
Yes, yes, they, they were made switch gears, yeah. Yeah, so we were just basically told point blank, none of your children are suitable for there. Um, and that was it. And then it's like, well, would you be available for a conversation for us to meet with you? To talk about our kids individually. And it wasn't really encouraged. It was, well, if, you know, if you, it was never offered. Um, I got out of the picture with the school at the end of year eleven because we chose for Mitch to go year twelve elsewhere. Um, because I could not really maintain a good communication with the principal at that, after that point. I was very frustrated.
I'll get to, uh, taking Mitch out at this point to a new school. But the fact that Mitch, um, was an NDIS participant.
Yeah.
And you're aware that the NDIS had a plan to support school leavers.
Yep.
Was there any, uh, suggestion either at the school or at the NDIS level? About Mitch having the opportunity to do any work experience? Or have any opportunity to think about what work he might want to do in the future?
Um, in year eleven, no, it was really, his funding was just being used for OT speech, um, allied health. Um, and even in the following year, we didn't have school. They used to, you know, have a school leave a funding line. We didn't have that. Um, we didn't receive that until after he'd finished school. Um, and I did find a little glitch with the NDIS in that. In that I did provide a complaint to the NDIS stating, all these kids should have a plan that does not. Our timing was unfortunate. Our timing was unfortunate, his plan finished in December, I think, and it took until January for us to get a new plan. So he actually came out of school with no plan in place, which meant he, you know, we couldn't actually engage services. It was not real clear about how we'd do that without a new plan in place. I now know a little different that we could have. Um, but there wasn't, you know, there wasn't guidance around that. And we just certainly didn't have that school leave a funding specifically in place.
Well, you, you saw it by September twenty eighteen that the school, as part of the one plan programming, should have some ex, some very clear planning and pathways for Mitch in terms of finishing school and what might be the options for him. So you were quite frustrated, weren't you, that this just was not included or even open for discussion? That's your recollection.
Our one plan meeting at the end of two thousand and eighteen was really just that curriculum focus, still the same template. Um, I remember just being incredibly frustrated and literally being in the meeting for probably three minutes. Um, having an argument around communication with the principal and just signing it off very hastily and left the room. I was not gonna, you know, and my comment was, I'll do everything for him to not be at this school next year.
When you got Mitch's end of year report, um, and you've extracted what it says in the statement, I'll just read this to you, Commissioner, it's paragraph eighty. The report said this, Mitch is a pleasure to teach. He has worked steadily throughout the year with some pleasing results. He has produced digital posters with the learning areas, across the learning areas with intensive one to one support from the SSOs. Mitch has earned seven hundred and eighty-five merit points. Well done, exclamation mark. We wish him all the best for twenty nineteen. Now pausing there, parents might go, that's not a bad outcome.
Yeah.
But that was not your reaction to receiving this um report. What was it that caused you some further frustration?
Um, well, it was all in the shadows of the bike, you know, the, the non-communication and the bike project. It was, um, we'd already communicated that we had full intention for Mitch to be at another school. We didn't have the go ahead for him until the, like, the day before school went back. But I was hell bent determined for him to have a great year twelve. Um, and I honestly feel they were glad to see the back end of us. The back end of me in particular. Mitch himself is not a, you know, he was a pretty pleasant lad at school, doing the best he could, but mum was asking a lot of questions and was frustrated by the whole communication in particular.
Do you feel that the relationship between yourself and your family and the school had deteriorated over time? Was that your perception?
In rereading the communication books, um, it was always very strained in the communication between us because I'd ask questions, like, where is the risk assessment then that you completed for that? You're telling me this is the nth, you know, this is the, this is the outcome. Where is what happened in between? Um, there was lots of to-ing and fro-ing around. You will now pick up Mitch from this point, you will drop off Mitch from this point, you will go to this SSO office and pick him up. It's because of an incident, A, B, C. Um, but we never got all the information around, okay, what else was happening? And I would be the parent that would say, well, what happened prior to that? You know, what communication opportunity did he have to tell you he needed to go to the toilet, for example, but wasn't? You know, like, I was just very frustrated around the lack of information, the lack of collaboration we had. And it just escalated by the end of year eleven.
When um you read the whole of your statement, you can see the language that you use in your statement as to when the relationship is working well, whether it's pathways, whether it's with a particular teacher or whether it's a particular part of Mitch's experience. But there were, that a good working relationship seems to be a very important element of supporting Mitch. What's your reflections on the importance of those relationships?
It's the team. If we don't have a team around someone with special needs, you're never gonna get anywhere near the results you're after. Because a team brings different thinking, it brings the collaboration, it brings, hey, we tried this and it worked, you know, and then how does that translate to what you're doing? And I now see that my youngest son, in meetings we have around him. And it's, it's the bringing everyone on the bus. It's that having everyone's different expertise, their different successes with your key person that all can feed together to make a totally different approach. Like Mitch was, I feel like Mitch was in a silo at a school that didn't connect to the rest of other parts of his life until we moved him to the other school, which really highlighted the difference.
All right, well, let's turn to that. So in twenty nineteen, you make the decision to transfer Mitch out of the school that he'd been at for some time into a new high school in year twelve. And he uh attended what you describe as an inclusive education centre at the new school. All right, what, tell us about this school and what was it that was different in the way in which the school was sort of structured or its approach?
Um, so it was similar in that it had two basic classes within, um, so like a senior and a junior class within a public school. Um, but it was the next, it was the town next door, so a forty-five minute distance away. Um.
Any buses or taxis?
No, it was, we, we were transporting the younger siblings, so it just became a part of the dynamic. And we pretty much used that as our argument to get him changed um out of zone. Um, you know, the, the fact that Mitch, you know, we had the opportunity for him to attend in a different town. Um, I'd heard great things about this school. Um, I, you know, I visited and had a tour and it looked, you know, quite different. Um, very open communication with us from the get go. Um, a very young, dynamic teacher, um, who on day one, um, had never met Mitch before. We'd, we literally got the approval letter of the, it was Australia, day long weekend and the school was starting on the Tuesday. And we'd got the communication that Mitch had the go ahead to go and I knew that we wouldn't get it till the day before. Um, so it was all systems go first day. Um, we turned up to the office, did the paperwork and met his class teacher, um, that he didn't engage into the classroom till the next day. And from day one, they would meet me at the gate and say, what does this mean? What does it mean when he's doing this? What does it mean if he's trying to, if he's making this sound or this gesture? Like, they were really, um, they were overwhelmed that they'd never, probably, they'd never, they said, we've never had anyone turn up for year twelve. We, we, you know, all of our kids have gone from year eight to year twelve with us and then we do year twelve. This is a whole different thing. And it's like, yeah, I know, but ask as many questions as you want, you know? So I'd, I'd get phone calls during the day, this, you know, what do you think? What about if we try this and I'd, you know, and I did um sensory accommodation, like the wiggle stool and those sorts of things from the get go. They showed us his classroom, which space he would be in, which teacher, and, you know, these are the kids that he'll be in here with. And they were very, um, it was quite a small tailored class. Um, had quite a lot of community connection options, which the other school didn't have. So making coffee one day a week at the public library and um that's community connection thinking. Um, it was, it was just, for me, it was a part of the grief and loss, I think, I needed to do for Mitch's, for the journey we'd had.
Why was that?
And that was, yeah, important to do.
Why, why was it important to sort of recognise for yourself that grief and the loss?
Because I felt we hadn't given him the best opportunity at the local school. Even though at the start, we thought we had a great opportunity there. Um, over that four years, it showed that we really didn't meet our expectations and we felt that we'd been way down.
Were all the students in these two classes students with disability?
Yes, yes.
And are you aware of what the uh eligibility criteria were for a student to be admitted to this programme?
Um, as far as I'm aware, there had to be a diagnosis, there had to be a psychological assessment done by the education department for eligibility criteria.
Were the students in these two classes selected in any particular way? Or was it just, this just happened?
Selection panel.
Better, better school than the other one that you experienced.
They all went through the selection panel. We did receive a letter that advised that the selection panel had met and that he did meet the criteria and that there was a spot.
Just for that, that year, that Mitch was at the inclusive education centre. What were the changes that you saw in him?
The cheeky Mitch came out a lot more. Um, they found that, that there was a very, you know, cheeky character that they, um, did. The peer connection, um, you know, at the end of the year, every, at the end of every year, we made chutney. Um, Mitch has built his cooking skills up over the years and he can chop, chop and cook. Um, you know, lead and follow. And Mitch, every year would make chutney and we'd take chutney to school for the teachers. And so we turned up again at year twelve with a basket of chutney. And then, actually, you know, they'd leave a bit earlier, so end of November, we'd finish and I think we went back um, in the first couple of weeks of descent with chutney. And we walked in and there was just this warm, yay Mitch! You know, like, the teachers, all of the, that were still there, it was this lovely final, you know, final farewell for Mitch, which I'd never seen that before. But you actually, you couldn't get a step in at the other school. You weren't allowed into those spaces, whereas um in year twelve, Mitch was having some seizures, so I did have to go to the school occasion and pick him up. And there was one occasion where he'd split an eyelid and we had to go to the hospital. And, you know, you were welcome in to wherever he was, um, into that space. You got to get the bag from the locker and, you know, pick him up. That, it wasn't like that at the other school, you weren't allowed in. Um, it felt very us and them, whereas the new school was not like that at all.
With, with the new school, was there enough time to work on the transitions from school to life after school in terms of employment or other options for Mitch?
There wasn't, um, I don't remember a significant transition at all. Um, our NDIS planned funding was quite unfortunate as well. Um, I did a lot of research, visiting um a couple of day option providers, went to their facilities, took Mitch along for a couple of morning trial sessions. Um, we looked at what programmes were available, what, what providers were around. Um, I don't believe school did that. I think that sat with the parents very much. Um, and we didn't find a lot. Um, he did do some of that programme in the start of the following year. So there was some connection, we did have some um win there. But um I do remember signing a piece of paper on the last day that said I had things in place. Like, it was asking me to sign that I had things in place for Mitch.
Why did you have to sign that?
I don't know. It was in the car park. It was a piece of paper that was, that Mitch's teacher said to me, I, I'd know, Kim, that you probably can't honestly sign this, but I need you to sign this to say you've got something in place for Mitch. And it's like, well, you know, I don't as well, but here, I'm signing it to finish this off for you. Um, we were just, it just felt like we were in a bit of a, um, you know, bit of a bad luck case that our plan ended when it did. We didn't get a new plan straight away. Um, we didn't get school leave funding. He, he's, Mitch is not the type of kid that's gonna go into an employment option anyway. But it meant we were kind of floundering for a bit, for longer than we needed.
Okay, well, uh, Mitch did go to schoolies, did he?
Yes, he went.
So you took him? What was that experience?
We went, we did our own schoolies in Bali. It was our first overseas trip together and he shone, he loved it.
So got a taste for sort of exploring the world, do you think?
He, he was, uh, it was, for me, the Bali trip was the ultimate, let's celebrate your finishing school. Um, and he got to drink beer for the first time. And the thing that I take away from Bali is he'd walk down the street like a normal tourist. And because the average tourist doesn't engage verbally with hawkers when they come out. So he'd just walk down the street and he looked like a normal Joe. People didn't respond differently when he didn't talk to them. So for him, Bali was, he looked like a normal dude.
After you got back from the schoolies with him, uh, and you're into, I assume, the summer holidays. What happens for Mitch after he leaves school?
He had a little bit of a run of holidays because we had core funding from NDIS. So I sent him away on quite a few trips because we didn't have anything in place. And eventually it got to the point where, uh, you've been on holidays for so long, you're actually forgotten that you do need to get up and do the washing. You know, I remember being quite, you are gonna, it's not holiday mode anymore. Yeah, yeah, he was loving it. He was like, I'm just gonna kick back and keep this going. Um, party mode. So um eventually, yeah, we connected him with um a day options provider. And so he started doing some day options and we were still travelling. So it was in the neighbouring town where he'd finished high school. So we would drop him off and pick him up when we were doing the school run with the other kids. And that was partially successful, but um in the adult world, where adult behaviour, you know, there was some dynamics with other participants that was problematic. So we found it wasn't the perfect fit. Um, and then we moved more into, well, actually, the, the blessing of COVID um was that one on one support became that normal. Um, I, I kind of had a mindset that, it may have just been me, that when someone was one on one funded, it actually meant they had exceptional difficulties that you had to support. Um, but with COVID coming around, with all those day options falling away from providers, you had to do one on one to have any, you had to do one on one support to have any engagement in the community at all. So we ran with a local provider that was just starting up, um, got on board with her in a very infancy. And um they had, you know, quite a few different staff and we just engaged him with different staff to have his days filled doing all sorts of things, um, one on one engaged.
Uh, has the one on one made a, a difference for him?
Mitch is still in that phase now. So Mitch has, has five and a half days a week supported in basically nine till three, that same sort of school window. Um, the nine till three keep him busy and it's varied between bike riding, immersion therapy, cooking. Um, I've got a big focus on, I don't wanna look at Mitch and see a twenty-one year old toddler. I want him to contribute to our family. So he cooks a meal twice a week for everyone to enjoy together. He does his own shopping, he does his own laundry, he does all of that supportive. He's responsible for all his own, you know, I don't wanna be changing your bed, I don't wanna be picking up your stuff from the chemist. You know, you do all of that with your supports. It's about him being independent with support.
What about sort of friendship groups of his aged peers and engagement in community? What opportunities are there for Mitch?
Because um that whole peer group from school didn't really have a, there was no lot, real connect transition for any of them. Um, we have reconnected Mitch with a few of his peers through social one on one supports, through, you know, meeting each other at the pool one afternoon a week during summer. Um, started some, like, the, the cooking idea that maybe he could connect with a couple of others from his peer group from the school. We're, we're very slowly working on that from the ground up because we don't have any providers or programmes running in our town that does that um at the moment. So we're looking to build that from ground up basically. And we've just started with some, yeah, they, they started this at the pool at the end of last year and reconnecting with some peers from school.
Knowing Mitch as you do, what do you, what do you say he sees the future for himself?
Oh, I don't know that he looks forward. Um, he lives very much in the moment. Um, I think if there's busyness, gross motor, big sensory satisfaction going on, a great meal and his bed and his favourite movie, he's happy, you know? Mitch, Mitch interacts differently with different supports. So a successful support relationship for Mitch means he's happy when they turn up. You know, he's not ducking off to be in his room away from them during the shift. He's engaged for the whole six hours. That to me says, I'm enjoying being with this person, I'm enjoying what we do. Um, I do gauge it very much on Mitch's engagement with the person as to whether we keep this relationship going with this support or whether we find someone else. Um, yeah, he's, he's well supported by quite a big range of people. And they all bring their own interests and capabilities and we tap into that as well to make a new, make, build skills for Mitch. So while one person is great around cooking, another is very physical and is bike riding and, you know, doing big swimming with him and another is, you know, bringing some whole different, you know, skill set. So we, we, we change it up a fair bit.
And, and for, for you and the family, are you also in the moment and just living in the moment? Or do you have in the back of your mind, what's the future for Mitch?
Um, for me, I've, I think I've learnt to not try and do the big picture planning too far down the track. Um, one question I get asked a lot is, what did, what will Mitch do in the long run? Um, and I quite often reply to parents, well, do you have children? Yeah, do you have a crystal ball? Do you know what yours is gonna do? I don't know what he's gonna do. Um, I hope, you know, my, my mum has this amazing dream that one day they'll tap into his brain and it'll be like Stephen Hawking and we'll know what he's thinking. Oh my God, wouldn't that be amazing? I'm just think there'll be a lot of mum you can rack off that will come out when he, when he does that. Can we just leave me alone? Um, who knows? Who knows what the future will bring with this technology and, you know, neural therapy and all the rest of it, but. But, um, our goal is just to have happy, healthy kids who have great, as good as mental health, we can give them a to be drug free. You know, like if they can have that life with a great family around them, I don't know when they're gonna move out of home. I don't, I think I used to probably have an aspiration for him living independently. That's caught on the back burner now because he does have siblings who are so much younger. So they're, they're gonna be around for a lot longer yet. And they all have a lovely interaction as siblings, so why even bother changing that if we don't have to?
You, you wanted to share Mitch's uh experiences with the Royal Commission, partly because you, you're in a situation for your younger children seeing what's different
Yeah.
to what occurred with Mitch. And I think as you've said today and you've said in your statement, is that reflection on Mitch's experience for you as one of grief and loss? And you feel that very heavily, isn't it?
Right.
So you wanted to sort of share that. Um, but you're a fairly optimistic person, one might say, reading your statement. I don't mean that in any pejorative way at all, but you've really focused on what needs to happen. And sharing your experiences is an opportunity to say to other parents out there, this is what we learnt. This is what you should expect for the future. So can I ask you to tell the Royal Commissioners and Commissioners, this is in the statement? But, Kim, what would you like to share with the Royal Commissioners about, as you've described it, your hopes and your suggestions for change?
So, um, the, the journey of being involved in the Royal Commission is, it has made a big shift for me from just focusing on Mitch's journey to what I'd like for the bigger picture. And having the younger siblings also means I'm very focused on where we'll be in the next ten years with them. Um, in two thousand and nine, I attended the Autism Pacific, Asia-Pacific Autism Conference, it was the first one in Australia. And I listened to a plethora of speeches, plethora, which went five days between all different, you know, professionals, parents, everything, just overwhelmed with information. And one of the key things I took away from that was a mum standing up and saying, get everyone on your bus, just get everyone on your bus and drive the bus and get them to share their information and their therapy and their whole knowledge. Because I can't be a speechy and O T, a mum, a physio, I can't be everything. I can, you know, love them to the cows come home, but I can't bring all those skills. Um, so I took that to heart. And for me, if I can, if from an education perspective, if every child with a one plan could have a team meeting once a term to shape the one plan, not for the one plan to exist on its own, but to have that team meeting and virtually works brilliantly, we've been doing this with our younger son. If you can bring a team meeting together once a term with whoever is in your team to share, it brings everyone's work so much better together that the pressure comes off the parent by probably fifty percent. Because I'm not sharing that information ten ways. I'm having everyone come together and do the strategy together. And then school can ask the question of the O T and the speechy around, hey, Kim said we're doing this, this and this, and you put this little thing in place, how does that work? Um, take the pressure off the parent by having that information shared in an amazing dynamic once a term. Um, and then that feeds that plan for the school as well, not just from a parent perspective. Because I know that when I was overwhelmed, there would be a hundred things that I would forget to take into that one plan meeting, even if I was taking it home and writing on it. There's not that collaboration from one parent or two parents like you get in a team. So I'd love to see a team meeting for every person that's involved around those kids once a term. Um, I'd love to see a transition of about eighteen months for any one with special needs in the education, as they're coming in halfway through year eleven into year twelve. Um, because they, most of these people will have an N D I S plan now and they do have people engaged. And they do have core funding that they can engage, whether it be an employment provider, a day option, one-on-one supports, whatever it is that's floating their boat, that's of interest for these people, how you can tap into that to step them out into the world. So, you know, I'd love to see one day a week by the end of year eleven, where they're engaged with a provider outside of the school. Um, and then by the end of year twelve, they would have a comfort space of, I do this Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I know that this is what I'm going to be doing the day that school finishes. I will, I have three days planned out and I really enjoy A, B and C. So it doesn't sit all on the parents to then, they walk away from school to then go, now what? And to see these, you know, they fall in a hole, everyone does, and then it falls on the parents as well.
Do you feel for your younger children that the options for them into the future may be greater options than available, than that available to Mitch?
They're coming through with N D I S in place. Um, they're coming through with parents that have done it once. Um, they're coming through with a team approach once a term. Um, it's a very different space for his younger siblings than what it was for him. Um, yeah, their outcome is going to be very different because, well, they're not Mitch, but they have a different team around them to what Mitch did. Um, and even if school then isn't the beyond end all and the perfect model, it doesn't matter because it's robust around them, it's not all hinged on the education provider. Um, and one thing that's rung through just sitting in the last two days has been grief and loss. If we can support families around grief and loss consistently across education and every setting, I think you'd see families that are, you know, that more abus, you know, it's a huge part of being a parent.
Kim, thank you very much for uh sharing Mitch's story and your family's story and uh sharing with the Royal Commission a lot of very sort of personal information about the experiences in your family and we're very grateful for your evidence
You're welcome.
today. The Commissioners, though, may have some questions for you.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, do you mind if I ask my colleagues if they have any questions?
Sure.
Can I start with Commissioner Mason? Do you have any questions?
Um, yes, um, thank you very much, Kim, for your evidence this afternoon. I did have a question about the team approach. Um, who's on the bus? I've heard someone say, who are the people in your neighbourhood?
Yeah.
Um, and you've answered the question, you've, um, you've given detailed information in your statement. Um, because I was really interested uh that when you talked about Mitch, you said, we need X for us. It did not work for us. And that is not a barrier with the school gate, it's actually still an extension of the life of the family. Um, so I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and um best wishes to, to Mitch and your family.
He's doing well.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Goble, do you have any questions for Kim?
Thank you very much, um, for your evidence. And I really feel for your grief and loss. And um just in thinking about what you might have expected from the two, the special school and the special unit, you might have expected that they were specialists, you know, in disability. So would you have expected that they might even have had cutting-edge technology for communication, seeing as a lot of the children um would have had communication needs and you wouldn't have had to have researched it? Much less that they didn't support that communication technology in the ways that you outlined? Would you have expected that they might have been absolutely expert and specialist?
Um, no, not at all, because I, I think we always knew we were a little bit, um, you know, asking the question and groundbreaking with what we wanted. Um, there were no other kids wandering in with an iPad, there were no other kids with a GoTalk nine um that I saw at the, um, you know, in primary school. Um, you know, I don't know of any other kids, there were other, you know, alternative communicators at the high school, but I don't remember us ever having, you know, conversations around how many were using that sort of assistive technology. It really just was our conversations all the time at school, I don't know what um others were doing. But I don't expect, I don't think I expected them to be experts, but I wanted them to be team players.
You wanted them to use it when you discovered it. And as far as the one plan went, you, you might have expected that in a specialised way they would have done individual planning that would have brought all of Mitch's strengths out and, and also stretched him. You wanted him to be stretched by this specialist place that he went to.
I wanted more collaboration in that one plan rather than a massive document that just felt like it had too much information in it, but not enough around specific strategy from it.
And you might have expected that they might have had high expectations of his riding a bike and had some two-wheelers for bikes as they're a specialist um school. You might have expected that.
I just wanted them to read the communication book and to see that he had, he could ride a bike rather than presume he couldn't. Like, they underestimated him on the bike.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, I mean, I guess the, the other area was the co-location um with the main school. Um, you might have expected that there was a little interaction between the schools um to have enriched Mitch and introduced him to the outside world.
I think, um, because I had friends who had students within the high school and, you know, even those young men were saying, it feels like they're in a cage. It feels like, you know, that they, we don't get to connect with the kids in the disability unit. And, you know, they knew Mitch out of school, but there was no connection with Mitch in school. You know, they would, they would have, you know, who knows what adventures they could have got up to if he'd spent a bit of time with them on the oval at lunchtime. Um, but, yeah, that wasn't encouraged, so.
Yeah, thank you. And also, I'm so glad that he sounds like he's doing pretty well now and the younger children are, that's terrific.
They're all good.
I was struck, like Commissioner Goble, with your paragraph one hundred and three, where you say that the ultimate result of Mitch's school years is grief and loss for me as a parent. To then have to reconcile, Mitch cannot relive those years or regain the potential that has been lost. It's a very powerful statement, if I may say so. Um, your evidence has been extraordinarily thoughtful and helpful. I'd like to ask you this question, which perhaps puts you in a counterfactual world, if that's, that's an expression that lawyers, lawyers use. We live in a world now and your family fortunately has benefited from the N D I S. If we put ourselves in two thousand and twenty-two and if there were to be a family that had a child like Mitch born now or perhaps a couple of years ago, what would you say would be the system, the advice, if asked, you would give to the parents of that child? For that child to have the best chance of developing to his or her full potential? How would you see this, this working? I know you've said some of the things to that effect in your last few paragraphs, but I just wondered if you might like to put yourself in that position
Yeah.
so that we can get perhaps a supplement to the benefit of your experience?
So a child born now, born now is going to have a lot of, um, you know, early development, developmental team approach around them, which, you know, is not what Mitch had. Um, so that is the gift the N D I S brings. It brings a, you know, they acknowledge that early development crucial is needed around these kids. Um, and for that to continue irrespective of where the setting is, so find a, you know, and I would think, I would hope that the preschools and schools now take that developmental approach for the early learning on board, whereas that wasn't about, that wasn't around. Um, yeah, it's the team, it's the bus, it's having, you know, it's having a school and a early learning centre. And whoever it is that's around your kids that you need around your kids to survive, it's having them all sharing the same information and having, you know, and if you need someone to be, you know, a case manager or that kind of role, finding that person as well in the mix, because there aren't, not every parent is up to being the advocate of strength or, you know? And I'm, consider myself a very strong person, but there are times when I've said some pretty, you know, bad things around, you know, I don't know that I can make it. Um, I don't want to see any parents in that position.
No, I understand that completely, if I may say so. Um. I want to thank you for giving your evidence. Um. I think you are a very strong person, if I'm allowed to say that.
Um, yeah.
And like Commissioner Mason and Commissioner Goble, I'm so pleased that Mitch has uh got the benefit of those extra years and the obvious love and support from you and your family. And we wish you and him and the rest of your family all the best for the.
They say they choose you.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's gorgeous, you love him.
I'm sure you do. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, um, Kim, and thank you, Commissioners. And that concludes the evidence for this afternoon. So we could adjourn now and then resume at ten o'clock tomorrow.
We'll do that, we'll adjourn till ten. Thanks.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.